We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish, direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 AM to search out the highest quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world. It's this freshness that we've prided ourselves on bringing to the community since 1988.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
On Saturday, December 12th, 2015, I'd like you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting with a brief and sad announcement to announce the passing of Norman Thayer, who was an employee of the DPW from 1964 to 1995. He was a longstanding town meeting member, dedicated employee of the town, and I know that we will surely miss him and his family will. And if we could just have a moment of silence and our thoughts, our prayers are with his family at this time. Okay, thank you all for coming to this joint meeting. We do have items, and I am going to remove or move one out of order, and this is the one I know came up at the planning board discussion on Tuesday as to why we took it off the agenda. I'm not sure exactly why that happened, but I'd like to start with the transportation element part of the local comprehensive plan. I don't think this is going to be as lengthy a discussion as some of the others. It is the one item I think we actually can take a vote on. The others, I think, are just going to be open discussion, and we'll probably put a timeline on each one of them to try to make sure we at least start the discussion on those issues. So, I'm not sure, Jim, if you want to lead us to the...
We discussed it briefly at the last joint meeting when we had the transportation study presented to us, and you all made some changes. But what you got in front of you was what was on the warrant, and I thought that really wasn't sufficient for you all to understand the context of what we were trying to do. So what you have here is, it's actually a second draft of the, what we call the narrative, that sort of explains our state of mind when we were doing it, what we're trying to achieve more than we can in the goals or the action items. So I would ask that you take a few minutes to just understand, read that, read the goal. We did make the changes that you suggested in the goal, and we made a few changes as well in the policies, and then you never saw the action items, and that will give you the context for the whole thing. So let me know when you're done.
Brian, you were passing around another handout. I'm not sure if I... Never mind. One of the questions I had while people were reading it is, in the recommendation concerning the presentation we had with the master plan from McMahon Associates, they had a number of different options as to how to reconfigure Main Street to make it friendlier to biking. And the options ranged from one that was going to be really, really friendly to biking to ones that really didn't do much for biking. And for me, the middle option was preferred, but I felt that this policy would actually really push us to go to the total biking one, and I want to make sure that we're not setting a policy that then restricts us in that way. Maybe I'm just reading more into what this policy says than that.
What we are trying to do, what we cut out in the description here, is you have the complete streets, but you also have the complete... Help me with that, I'm blocking on the word, the complete... It's not complete streets, but it's the web, the...
The system of car it is.
Yeah, no, no. What it is, is if you cannot get a complete street where you can have pedestrian, cycling, and vehicular traffic, then you look to a parallel street, like Catherine Lee Bates, to add the cycling, let's say, because here along Main Street, we have the sidewalks and we have the street. Now alternatively, on Main Street, you could say, "Well, we're not going to allow parking on one side," and that becomes the cycle path. I don't know whether that's reasonable here, just because of what I see about people's behavior during the summer. But these are, I see these as two options here, and the main report, you will remember, that all down through East Falmouth or Davisville, there is not sufficient width of the streets there to have everything on both sides, and in some instances, not to have everything, unless you start, in many cases, they said you're going to have to do some land-taking to make this happen. This is a long-term view, and the reason that this plan is here, the local comprehensive plan, as you will remember, is it has no teeth legally, but it is simply a vision plan looking forward so that when you do planning, when we do planning, when the DPW does, let's say, street renovation, they should go to the local comprehensive plan and see, does it comport with the long-term vision? So that's a long way around, Doug, of saying...
I just don't want to adopt a plan that we know we can't even implement, and so I want to make sure there's enough flexibility to say, "Where feasible, where, you know, giving us a little bit of a, for instance, in the East Falmouth area, or as you're saying, on Catherine Lee Bates or on Main Street," where you say, "Yep, the best thing would be from a transportation point of view, get rid of parking on one side," and the town comes and says, "Yeah, we're not going to do that."
Right.
And I don't want to...
No, no, that's okay.
Okay.
That's why maybe we should put back in the other thing, that it's complete network, complete network, I think, was the other one, whatever the terminology is. It's the alternative to a complete street, and we can insert that into the...
Just sort of along the lines of Doug's comment, in the first, really second paragraph, starting "our mobility," maybe the way to do that would be instead of "must support," which, you know, is a complete directive to say, you know, "must consider." That's just, or we can play with that language. Also, if we're going to have something in quotes like "complete streets," it should be defined, and, you know, I think Doug's point about the balance is very important in that, you know, it might be incorporated that we balance our historic character, or in very, very importantly, I think one thing that is an absolute must is that we look at the effect on traffic of any kind of changes, because if we, you know, if we eliminate parking and add, you know, bicycle lanes, which I think, you know, are possibly all good things, and we back, you know, traffic up instead of an hour on 28 as it was some days this summer, now it's two hours, I think we have to look at all of the effects of this, you know, it's all a domino effect, so I think that that concept should be included.
Okay, where was the word "must," Sue? I'm not...
It's in the second paragraph, second to last line, "To accomplish this, we must support."
Okay, you wanted to change it to what, please?
Um, I'd have to think about it, but off the top of my head, I, you know, "must consider."
Okay.
Or just take the "must" out.
Or "should."
I think, you know, I'd like to just, "We support." We support the implementation and evolution of innovation.
Yeah, that's great.
That's fine.
Yeah, Jim?
I think you guys are reading this a little too tight. It's really just a goal, you know? It doesn't say you have to do this, you know, we're not going to hit every goal. We, maybe, there's something we try to accomplish, and that's really what it is.
And this is in the narrative.
In the narrative, I know, but if he's saying the overall plan, when he says, "Well, we wouldn't be able to, we'd be putting bicycles ahead of cars and clogging our streets," that's not what we're talking about. We just want to consider everything. That's really what it's meant to do as a goal and not necessarily a program that you have to follow.
Yeah, the other thing that we were struggling with in how to say it, and we still haven't come up with a good resolution, and maybe we never will, so I'm just laying it on you, is that when we do things with streets or with the bicycle path, and previously it was the railroad, well, we've taken away our capacity to have railroad in this town by putting the bicycle path there. To bring railroad back, I don't know how we do it, if we wanted to do rail travel, bringing it back to Depot Avenue into Woods Hole. We can't do it now because we've got the bicycle path, and I'm not saying by any means that we should do away with the bicycle path. That is a shining gem for Falmouth. So what I am saying, though, is the next 50 to 100 years, we must not lose any of the transportation pathways that we currently have, and we should, if at all possible, if there's a chance, broaden that pathway by acquisition of lands along it so that we cannot imagine what might be 50 to 100 years. We need the capacity to be able to use those major transit lines in a way that would be necessary in 50 to 100 years. We're not driving horse and buggies anymore, but our streets are still laid out on the horse and buggy, the cow path that existed so many years ago. And Julian, I know, coming from the Midwest, you know exactly what I'm saying, because scratching my head when we arrived here, "Why was the street ever planned this way?" Well, it wasn't, the cows followed it, and it just developed with horse and buggy and further to roads. So we couldn't really put it into this transportation narrative. No way can you put it into an action item, but that's, if you can come up with something to add to the narrative, that's not what town meeting votes. They only vote the goal and the policies, and that narrative can be changed at any time to give a further explanation, as can the action items.
I also have a little concern about using the word "non-polluting." In my belief, we don't have, there is no such thing.
Yesterday.
I can't think of any technology that is actually 100% non-polluting.
You're absolutely right.
Now, electrical cars are still having to create the electricity through some way that creates pollution and so on.
Can we put "clean," okay?
Low impact. Something interesting.
Which would you prefer, clean, low impact?
I would say, I like low impact because that's the goal of trying to move toward that direction. I agree, I mean, that's sort of just a...
How about both words, clean, comma, low impact?
Well, anyway.
But the intent is what we're after, and so...
You like those, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, so it's clean, comma, low impact.
Okay. Sam? I think the complete streets approach, though, as a goal, is, I think, an important one, and I think it kind of goes along, if you look at T-Ticket Highway, White Highway, we have to worry about the coastal resilience, and we've got a couple of bridges there that are aging, they're under the state's control, but I think we need to be advocating for upgrading the height of those bridges, and at that time, we could get rid of that bottleneck effect where we can't even put a sidewalk in there for people that want to walk across those places without being right up against cars. So I think these goals are worthy goals, and I would not want to water them down too much. I know the parking is an issue, but we're always going to be worrying about that on a local scale here on Main Street, but I think we need to keep in mind that there are other parts of the town where we can be advocating for significant upgrade in our capacity to provide all kinds of transportation, bicycles, pedestrian, and vehicle.
Or whatever might be in the future, hovercraft, whatever.
Yeah, if I could continue.
Have to risk us sounding silly.
I think we still have the ability to do train transportation to North Falmouth without tearing up the bike path, and then we can worry about, you know, the shuttle service from there down into the town. So I think, you know, it's, we don't have to give it up entirely, and it would be nice to complement train with bicycles, since we've got the bicycle path there, and it may very well be a tourist attraction for those people that don't want to fight the traffic over the bridges.
I just wanted to mention that they, I'd like to keep the term "complete streets" because it is something that is known, and it is defined because it's simply a concept of, we have pedestrians, cyclists, and motorized vehicles can use the same car, so it is defined right there, so I think we should keep that.
Agreed.
The suggestion wasn't to delete it, it was to define it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
The fact that it just wasn't, it's not obvious that that is, but that makes sense.
Yeah.
So if that, just the paragraph, the sentence that had the "must" and the "non-polluting," if we change those, I'd be very happy to move forward and vote our support.
I would agree. Okay, but wait, wait, before you do that, because your support has to be for the goal and the three policies, and I want to make sure you really are on board with how they're stated.
I do notice the differences from when we voted, talked about this before, but I thought actually you made a lot of the changes that we were talking about, and I am much more comfortable with the way they are.
Okay, and the reason I'm going to make sure that you are comfortable with exactly as it is, because we will then vote as a planning board to put this on the warrant, and I think it is not a good thing for town meeting when we come in with changes.
Yep, I agree.
That is really hard for them to incorporate at the last minute, and that happened with housing, and then it was going to happen again when we first put this on. This is why we asked you to do indefinite postponement on it, because I thought, "No, we can't keep on doing this." So we have to get a meeting of minds here, and that's the way it's going to go. Are we okay with that?
I'm not sure if it was an intention of the font size, but I don't like the font size change for tracing opportunities.
Well, those were... We're making it clear we changed it. You didn't like the words there before, so...
Right.
That's a regular font for the final draft.
Yeah, no, no, no. I followed what Marlene was doing. I haven't looked to see the way it occurs on the webpage.
It's bold and twice the size as...
Yeah, love it, and the change in type style. I agree with you, Doug, actually.
To be clear, we're not going to argue about that later on.
Yeah. No, when it goes on the warrant, that will be in there.
Any further discussion from the board's selectmen on this?
I think I finally have to say something about this. Now, I was just given this, so first of all, it would have been much better if I'd had more time than to sit down at 8 o'clock and pick this up. The next thing that I would say, that any time you're talking about any language that is going to go to town meeting, it needs to be elementary. It cannot be much higher in its level of choices of words, and it's been something I have said over a period of time. In trying to interpret each word, and you came up with simple four-letter "most," I mean, it's, or "must," and when you want to go to town meeting, it's got to be incredibly simple to get your viewpoint across, to get your reasons, to get your policy, and I'm still at the same point in looking at this. You know exactly what it means because you live with it, and you could take this apart and you would say "exactly," but when I think about town meeting, reading it and understanding what you're trying to say to them, it takes some energy to do that, and you need to, you need to be prepared. The language, the language is, is difficult to know exactly what you're looking for. That's...
The one I would agree with you on that is policy number two. I do think there's a very simple way of saying what you're trying to say on that one.
Say it, Doug.
I don't, I mean, I guess maybe I don't know if there's a simple, I'm a little confused as to what that means.
Okay, we had it a different way, and Sam came up with this change. I didn't bring what we had before, but what we mean, and I think it was more clearly stated the first time around, is that, let's say we decide to put in a further extension of the bicycle path. We need to look to the useful lifespan of that bicycle path and what repairs might be necessary during that useful lifespan to keep it going for another lifespan so that it doesn't deteriorate, and we need, as a town, to commit to a budgetary amount, say, putting it away on a yearly basis. Now, Peter McConity, when we had him sit down with us, was jumping up and down for joy with this, because we all know we've been through some tough budgetary years, and he's the one who gets killed when things deteriorate and he doesn't have the funds to keep them up. So before we commit to additional transportation lanes, if you will, we have, excuse me, we have to look at the lifetime effect of it financially and see whether, as a town, we feel we can afford that commitment. And that's what we're saying here, because it just does no good to build something and then it, build a house and don't do anything for 50 years. It isn't going to be much of a house at that point.
I'm getting a sense that this board would rather wait to have a chance to read it more before, voting it now and then coming back to, "Ooh, we missed some things," and then we end up having exactly the conversation, who said, "Yeah, let's not do that."
Doug, this is perfectly all right. We're up against, what is it, January whatever, the first week in January did long. I'm fine if we put it off until the fall town meeting.
Well, I don't think we need to wait that long. I think we could very easily, in our December 21st meeting, bring this back, and I think fairly quickly get through some changes that we can then send back to you, and we could say, "We're ready to vote on with the changes we've made." You can come back and say, "Well, actually, either vote yes or no," and come back to us again, but...
And our meeting is on the 29th, our next meeting. So...
I apologize for being late. Oh, I'm sorry.
Of which month?
December.
December.
You're saying December 29th is the next meeting?
Is our next meeting.
Oh, excuse me, okay, fine.
So if you get the changes to our board, then we can look at it and decide, okay, does this need more discussion, or are we ready to go?
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say, doing a very quick review, that I think they are broad general statements, but they're strong statements.
Yeah.
And I think they're comprehensive statements, so could they be, after a second look, maybe could they be structured a little bit differently so that there are fewer of them, but they also say the same thing? I don't know, but I think you're right. I think we need a little more time to review.
Just in that light, it might expedite things if you send us whatever it was we looked at before, and this issue was clearer in some folks' minds, like the prior draft.
I can read it.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob, I didn't bring it, I'm sorry.
Falmouth will institutionalize a budget process to provide for the full cost pricing needs of the transportation infrastructure. That's what we had.
I like this one better. I was just curious, thank you.
So that's why it was changed.
That's why Sam changed it the first time around.
I would almost get rid of "lifecycle," and then I have a problem with it.
You would like what, Doug?
If you got rid of the word "lifecycle."
That's a term of art. I mean, in the industry, this is, "lifecycle" is taking a look forward and not just putting in something now on a capital expenditure without thinking about what it's going to take to maintain it over its lifecycle. That's, I mean, that's a common language, whether it's in your particular profession or not. I think that's a pretty well-understood terminology.
I don't think it is by town meeting members.
That's exactly right.
I think it would be.
I do, too.
I think they'd appreciate it, especially given our perfect example of the bike path, and how we're struggling to fund that right now.
Yeah. I mean, something as critical as bike path to the image of this town, when I walked down there during the spring, it was so deteriorated, in places half of it was covered with sand, and it was sinking on the edges and huge cracks that were dangerous. This is the kind of thing I'm talking about. What's it going to take? How much reviving? Pardon?
That's coastal resiliency, isn't it?
No, the whole southern end, you know, you can't really even rollerblade on it anymore.
I know, but a lot of that's because it is...
It's tree roots.
No, it's tree roots.
It's tree roots.
Yeah, it's tree roots. Do we get rid of the trees? Well, you can do it secretly by just cutting the roots, and, you know, then the trees die, and, oh, my, we have to remove them, so we take away the problem of the roots.
You know, but that actually is a really good example, if you really think about it. When we first put the bike path down, it was beautiful. It was nice. We didn't consider, you know, okay, how, what's it going to cost to maintain this, or how should this be done for the next 20 years? Just go over those roots, they'll be all right. It looked great, and for five years, it was wonderful, but maybe we should have taken a little bit longer look, and I think that's what we're trying to say here, and when we agree to expend that kind of money, we plan on it for the really long term, and there may be two or three replacements and repavings, but just take a little bit longer look at it. I mean, a lot of people are involved in budgeting, "No, I'll just put something there, we'll get it started, and we'll take care of it, it goes on the budget." Everyone knows that you've got to really put a lot more money into to get it the way you really want, so instead of just being a placeholder or starting it on infrastructure, we're talking about, you know, budgeting for the lifecycle, the whole period that we're going to use it, and that's the point we're trying to make.
Heather?
The only contribution I might make, I think from a planning process, it's an absolutely appropriate exercise, but from a practical implementation standpoint, you never reach those goals. Just think about sidewalks. We've added miles and miles of sidewalks that we haven't added the staff to plow them, we don't have additional equipment, we haven't increased the capital budget to sustain those, but it's still a priority goal, and it makes absolute sense to put them in. So I think the only caveat is that, yes, those are excellent planning exercises, and they should be done, but you still make, choose to implement the project, understanding that it is not fully funded for its lifecycle cost, and so just be mindful.
Got a problem with that.
But it's just a reminder, it's your guideline.
Well, we'll come back to you after our December 21st.
And please do recall that if you have questions about the understanding of town meeting, please point out where the questions might come, whether it's a fatal flaw or whether it's words that need to be explained to town meeting, if there's a question.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, is to discuss housing, and what I'd like to do is try to, we have a number of different issues we want to discuss this evening, this morning. I'm hoping to wrap this up by around 11:00, and so each topic, we're going to have about a 45-minute discussion. We see this as a beginning phase, we're not having any action items that we're voting on, and so if I cut us off saying, "Well, it seems like we've come up to a point where we can move on to the next topic," we will do so. So we did have the housing study that was done last year, and one of the things that our board wanted to do is really make sure that we take some steps to say, "All right, what do we do now?" And I think part of it may be a little bit of information from your board on the two articles that you guys are thinking of for the Springtown meeting, as at least a starting point for the session.
Well, the most, what we've been putting most time on, and it's been on our agenda, is the accessory apartment, and we have a draft of that, I don't, we have for this discussion? No? Well, the biggest issues that we're discussing publicly on it is how, if, if we are going to have accessory apartments, we're kicking around, you know, the definitions of it, wanting to keep in the same, within the same lot coverage, we don't want to change the look of our neighborhood. The idea is to come up with a plan that will keep the integrity of the neighborhoods as looking at single-family homes, and that if we are putting, the things we're wrestling with are, are these additions, one, we're actually allowing it, we're considering allowing additions. Before, the conversion dialogue was, if a lawn you kept it inside the structure of the house, you know, it was, it's allowed, we already have that. We're actually going to say, "Okay, if somebody wants to have an in-law apartment, they can actually add it on." And then the real, we haven't finished with it, we're having a lot of public discussion on it, we're going back and forth, well, does that mean it has to be attached, or could it be detached? And so that's probably the biggest, there's a lot of other issues, but that's the really big one. So where, the goal is, that we're talking about, is that if you would drive down the street, it's still going to look like a single-family neighborhood, it's not going to look like we just all of a sudden converted it to two families, that the... That the, the structure has to be, it can't be any more than 18 feet. So it's, you know, it has to be 30% of the primary structure. We're talking about that it has to be owner-occupied, at least, you know, that, so it's not converting a single-family home into a two-family rental. You know, we're, we're, those are all the things we're talking about. Brian, what's the architectural word we were talking about?
Unified architectural effect.
Yes, unified architectural effect. And this is, we had a lot of comments from the public about how maybe we need, you know, have to have an architectural review board, but we really don't want it. Well, part of the goal in doing this is not to lay on all the reasons why you can't do this, you know, we're trying to find ways to make it a little easier. So we're trying to, you know, hash things out. So our goal would be to have some language where if we identified an area, this would be by right. And we, now, it's not going to be, firstly, where it goes is another whole discussion. We're also wrestling with, you know, nitrogen loading impact. So one of the easiest areas is just put an area in the sewers. But, you know, we needed more than that. So we might be probably having a D-nit situation on it. So those are all things that are still in discussion. And I guess...
So part of it is the accessory apartment bylaw is a zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Is it going to be allowed in only certain zones, not a town-wide bylaw?
That could be. We're working on all that, yeah. It may be an overlay district. There's a couple different ways to do that. We are deploying it, first we create it and then we deploy it. So we're, we're, we're working on both right now. But I guess what we'd like to talk about with you folks is what, the really thing is, is let's say a situation, okay, we're not, we're not going to allow them to violate lot coverage, okay? So we're not, it has to, has to fit. But could you see a little, there's a, it's used around the country all the time, they call them granny flats, small little apartments tucked in behind the house where, you know, you can't see it from the front of the house, it's the same color, has the same architectural features. And the only way you can tell it's really different is if you walk all the way around and say, oh, my God, that's a detached structure. So that's the philosophy, or, or is it your point of view, no, no, we don't want these anywhere, can't be adding on, we don't want two families? I mean, the big thing amongst our own board, we have this discussion all the time, we're not finished with this. We, we're having back and forth. But the philosophy here is tried to, we have a accessory bylaw, it's been in effect for a long time. No one's ever used it, because the town meeting and our own boards put so many restrictions on it, it became impractical and never got done. The housing plan came very clear, the easiest way to get housing, fastest way to put it in, into the stream, is the accessory bylaw. Many, many citizen towns have done it. It's, it could be done, and it's, when somebody does this, it's your own home, probably your family member there. I mean, it's, it's Falmouth people building and creating it. And so it sounded to us as this is the best way to go. And all we have to do is get together as town leaders and to present something to town meeting that can pass. So that, you know, that's, that's a quick overview of it, but do any of you really have objections to, you know, actually, people actually adding on to their house and building it another unit on it? That's, that's, that's what we're talking about.
For me, the add-on isn't as much a problem as a second structure, but...
I tend to agree that there's a big difference between an add-on and a second structure, but with respect to family members, the issue tends to be that when the house gets sold, it's no longer a family member. So I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, you know, at this point off the top of my head, I don't feel like I have a preference exactly, because I haven't studied it enough. However, you know, that has to be in, in folks' minds. And I also wonder what the incentives will be, because these exist all over town already. And for, to have them legalized or, or, you know, I think that one of the benefits, if this goes forward, is that a lot of the existing such structures, you know, might have an opportunity to come into, you know, whether it's a, you know, it certainly would make money for the town, because I'm sure there are certain permitting or inspection requirements that might come into play. So I was curious what the discussion on that was.
As far as, we are, we feel pretty strongly that we're going to put an owner occupancy issue in this, okay? So you, when you sell it, that takes the family situation, puts it right back to where it was before. You know, we do not want these to become just rental, an accessory apartment is to somebody, the owner has to live in one of the units. The idea, the real philosophy here is a family can have a home and they can live there for generations. And the older people could, you know, run, when they build the house and maintain, grow the family, when, they could actually end up living in the back part and have the younger part of the family take it over, you know, and so...
But that's not what exists in Falmouth. The much bigger percentage is summer rentals, weekly, you know, that's a, that's a, where people, that's how a lot of Falmouth people keep their, are able to live in Falmouth.
Right. We are talking about having the rental component here, that it has to be for months, not, not weekly rentals. One of the things that we are dealing with in our discussions is people don't want them to become weekly rentals and just like at the beach house, but, you know, just, just a quick, quick turnover. We haven't resolved all that, but the method we're looking at is the length, the two things to answer your question specifically are the length of the term and the family and ownership component. And if you come up with a better idea to help with this goal, we could use it. But that's, we, that, we were, we're working on that. Go ahead, Bob.
I'd like to jump in here. We're not talking about this only being the same family, because that's the problem right now. You can't do this unless you have another family member that's going to occupy that other unit. What stemmed this, or started this conversation off was, we've got a lot of homeowners that have these big old houses. All the kids are gone, they're empty nesters. They've got a second floor or first floor that they would like to be able to rent out. And therefore, they would stay in their house, they wouldn't have to try and find a smaller house, which, try and do that in Falmouth now. So this would also increase the rental stock in the town, which is sorely needed, and allow people to stay in their own homes. And whether they happen to rent it to somebody in their family, that's inconsequential. And the fact that it is owner-occupied, we're not going to have absentee landlords creating apartment buildings around the town out of the existing housing stock.
And so that, that's where, I'm in complete agreement on the accessory apartment that's in the building or even in a building that's added on. And I understand exactly the way that works. And I'm very supportive of that. It's the second structure where I have some questions.
Yeah, just two things real quick. First of all, I think in terms of selling it to town meeting, we might want to think about doing both together. Not only the actual bylaw change, but also the overlay district, because it would at least let people know that there's a limit to how far this is going to go into the community. I think putting the two together is important. Secondarily, I want to point out that my wife and I bought our first home, because we bought a home in an affluent neighborhood, we were young professionals, we couldn't afford this home, except we did already have a grandfathered apartment. It was a conversion of a residential bungalow to put a mother-in-law's apartment on the second floor. That allowed us to pay for the mortgage. So this gives an opportunity for young people to actually purchase residence, because they have a source of income that supplements their regular earned income, if you will, as a way of paying off the mortgage. That worked for us, and I know I've talked to a number of people, it was certainly my introduction into being a landlord, too. When we sold the house, you know, the tenant had the right to stay in it, because they had a lease. And they continued, even though it was a new owner who was living in the residence, it wasn't a rental property per se. But that kind of ownership works at the low end, as well as the, you know, the person whose children have left and need an additional source of income.
Rebecca? I guess my question is, this does not exist, what Sam just explained, in Falmouth. Right now, if you have a home, you could not do what Sam just explained. You cannot rent part of your home.
I know I couldn't do it in the house I live in now.
Because of Falmouth's regulation.
Unless it was a family, unless it was a family member. I could, I could put a, one of the kids or mother-in-law or somebody convert part of the house into an apartment, add a stove, sink, and a kitchen.
It's always that stove, isn't it?
And there's, there's also lot size requirements that really exclude most of the town.
Right. Yeah.
And keep in mind, on our building code, it's the extra oven. You can do, you can have, you can have a whole kitchen-type thing in your house and everything. As soon as you put a stove in there, it's got to be zoned properly for it. You know, it's the stove that makes the deal. So you can go downstairs, have dishwasher, sink, refrigerators, everything you, you put a stove in, the building permit stops right there. You got to, if you don't fit the zoning, stop.
And there are ones you can say, Grant, you know, if it has been done in the past, you can continue to do that. And that's where, you know, I have a similar situation where I owned a precinct property that had a house in the front lot and a house in the back, and was able to do it because of, it had been done since 1925.
Okay.
And, but currently, if I were trying to do that from the beginning, I would not be allowed to. Heather?
I wonder if there's a way to introduce this as two separate articles. It seems to me that the accessory apartment, you know, could join to the existing structure or something that is a lot of interest in. But from a policy standpoint, the nanny apartment, I think, is very consistent with what we've established the needs of the community are for millennials and seniors, that those types of structures are what is going to be attractive for us to be a sustainable community for the long term. We might not have the regulatory tolerance or the growth management tolerance for it right now, but if there's a way to introduce the accessory apartment bylaw, and then a second article that addresses the freestanding structure, so they at least introduce that conversation to town meeting, I think that's, that's a really important discussion for us to have as a town.
And I guess I'd say the reason why I'm a little leery about the second one, the second accessory building, is unless it is so tightly drafted, it's one of those ones I can really see being abused, say, well, you know, there's a house across the street that has a pool house that's being put in, it's a second building, and it certainly looks like it's going to be a house. I mean, it's, it's, there's a pool next to it, but there are going to be bedrooms above the pool, you know, on the second floor, and they got away with it because it's a pool house. But I would worry that unless it's so tightly drafted, it's going to be two houses on a lot.
The thing with, the other side is there's some lots that it actually works. Some places you can have a detached garage, you know, and it'd be perfect to have a unit up above it. It fits in the neighborhood, it looks like a single-family home with a beautiful garage, and it's just balanced, and it doesn't change the impact of the neighborhood. That would preclude that from happening, if, because it is a separate structure. Same thing if there was, out in Hatchville, a big old barn, and it was a perfect situation, you weren't going to change the look of the place at all, but having a unit above, in the barn, that would also prevent that. So that's what we're wrestling with. We don't disagree, but...
Why do we even have the restriction on two properties?
What?
Why do we even have the restriction on two structures? I mean, if...
That's a massive change. What we're proposing, Doug, is a secondary structure, no less than 30%, of the main primary structure. If we did that, everything would be a duplex. I mean, two houses on every lot, that's far, much more far-reaching.
At least have a maximum of 800 square feet.
Yeah, we have some limits to try to accomplish.
And this is where we have, we've not talked about the details as to...
No.
Exactly what I was talking about.
Right.
The really tightly written limits that you're saying you've already...
And we, we're not finished with it, because we don't have a full agreement on our court either.
Well, you know, the way I look at this is, we have two goals in a certain sense. And I think it's important to clarify what the goals here are in terms of creating opportunities for additional housing. One is for people who already own their homes, it provides additional income to that, to that homeowner. And probably they might need that, and that would be helpful. And on the other hand, it provides housing for people who are young or people of any age, but particularly work, people in the workforce, so that we can, we can, we can have a sustainable community. Because if we don't have jobs for young people that keeps them here, we're not going to be sustainable. We can't, we can't go forward with everybody here being 67 years old and older and come late for meetings when they, when they should. Yeah, it's hard. No, but, no, but I'm serious. I think we really need to look at what our goals are. And then try to develop the bylaws or the opportunities in housing that's already here that's going to meet that goal. And not worry about, should it be an additional structure? Should it be part of the original home? Try to figure out, how do we meet the goals? And if additional structures can meet that goal, then how do we regulate those? But I really think that we should be goal-oriented in this. And think about, whatever we do, is it going to accomplish what we want it to accomplish? And that, to me, is, the overarching goal is to have housing for young people to provide a workforce that we need.
Bob and I both understood originally that, no, you couldn't build anything new. And the other part of the board thought, yes, you could. I think, Paul, were you on that? Can't build anything new. So that was a fairly lively part of our last discussion. I think it is fair to say, if the separate structure already exists in the form of a garage or a barn, fine, you can convert it. If you want to build something new, what we were talking about is the granny flat out back. It can be separate, but connect it with a breezeway, so it still looks like part of that same house. And both parties can use that breezeway as a porch.
We haven't finished with that, but that's what we're wrestling with.
And another important thing to give you maybe more confidence, even though we're hoping to eliminate the need for the special permit, we still intend to maintain site plan review and specifically review each case for architectural appropriateness and, you know, that it's not an eyesore or a second house type effect. So whether it be the planning board or the ZBA, we're still planning to have a site plan review and control.
One other comment I wanted to make, and not just about rental housing. We have, I think the last time I looked, and Brian, something like 49%, 48% of the homes in Falmouth are second homes.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. That's huge. And a lot of that is that there, those homes are investor-owned. They're really not people who just come here in the summertime because they have a lot of money and it's vacant in the winter. A lot of these are investor-owned. And we had a big discussion about this over in Barnstable a couple of weeks ago. And some of the realtors from the Hyannis area were there. And they were saying how that drives up the cost of homes when they're investor-owned, because they can, they just want to get the, the money, whether it's a year-round rental or whether it's a summer rental. They're in it to make money. And that drives up, you probably know that, Jim, it drives up the cost of housing. And if we, we really need to reduce that, we shouldn't, we should, we should find, I know, we just have to find a way so that we don't have so many investor-owned properties where people are just buying them up to make money. We should use them for the, use them for the people who live here.
Well, we're trying to put an occupancy term on this as well, to address that issue. I think we're, we talked about, I don't know, seven months, we got some kind of, we're taking that into consideration, that they're going to have to, the owner's going to have to be present in this house for a significant amount of time, sign an affidavit every year. I mean, there's going to be a list of qualifications. This will be on the deed, it'll be deed-restricted, it goes on forever, and there'll be, you know, there'll be a set of rules. And one of the things we're kicking around, I don't know what we settled on, but was actually some kind of affidavit, just like rental units now, we passed a bylaw, they are supposed to be inspected every year. Okay? There's a fee that they're supposed to pay to the town. The realtors are supposed to register them, and the summer rentals are supposed to be inspected. We've, you guys passed all those rules. I don't know how we're doing on enforcing them, but we're figuring these would fall right into that inspection, registration, and process that you've already set up for that.
And we have to take into consideration Airbnb. I mean, it is there. And I mean, I'm not saying regulate it, but just keep it in everyone's mind that a lot of people, and I know people down Cape, particularly in the towns where they're, they're year-round and they have a lot of empty areas, there's a lot of Airbnb that goes on. We're just renting a room. I know of a woman who makes $65,000 a year in booster, because she rents out a room through Airbnb. I mean, it's, it's, it's there.
We're, I don't know how we could, we're, we think the occupancy, the owner occupancy is the best idea we've come up so far to, to deal with that.
And tenant occupancy is, is not, that's year-round as well, that's...
Sue?
On site plan review, do a butters get notice? I wasn't sure of that.
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I certainly, the idea of incurred accessory apartment by law, I think is a great one. The kind of, some of the kind of details we're discussing right now, I would much rather leave in your hands, because you've been dealing with these issues way more than we have, and I appreciate your listening to our questions, they say, yeah, of course we thought of that, but, yeah.
It's real important, though, I guess, we, we have to decide amongst ourselves first, but the, the only thing that I'm hearing a lot of separation on is whether they can be detached or not. And I, I'm hoping that we can come up with a, a plan for architectural view and site plan review with the theory, philosophy that it, it has to look like it's, fits in the neighborhood, that, that we might be able to have it detached if, because I think we'd get a lot more of them if we did that. And that's the only reason why I'm pushing that. That happens all the, we were, we've seen other areas, cities and towns around the country, that, that's where they get more of them. It's a lot harder to tie them in, I don't know how builders or whatnot, but making roof lines come together, tie them in, it's a lot harder to just put it, you know, actually have the buildings come together, and so we're trying to resolve that. But if we have to, that's still, I think we could go a long ways if we had to have them attached. So, that, we could live with that if we had to, we're going to continue to work on it and see if we can come back with something to make you feel more comfortable.
And I would really love if there's a way that the ones that are existing in town right now, of a house in the front and a house in the back, could be built into being legalized or accepted, or make, you know...
We could, we could make it part of that. If they fit the criteria, they could automatically apply and be in, just fill out a piece of paper and...
And those are the ones that won't be able to be attached, and I, and some of them are just so separate that you're not going to build a two-hundred-foot breezeway to connect them, and...
Right.
How do you make that fit also with it?
But that's already, in an already existing structure.
Right.
So that's covered with that.
Okay. I just personally feel like it'd be sort of a shame to totally exclude the option for detached two-car garage with an apartment above it, because in many cases, that would be a perfect fit.
Perfect.
As long as it seems to make sense with the site plan review. So, that's my main thought, not wanting to exclude it. If anyone in the audience would, okay, Paul?
I think we agree on the goals and policies here, the devil's in the details, and that's what we're struggling with. Own-occupied, design review, all those issues. But we even talked about something that hasn't come up yet, is trying this in the district of town rather than town-wide, because this is a far-reaching, very, very important issue to be discussed, but you may want to consider also, should we try this in a particular district in town rather than town-wide to see how that works, and then we can modify it in the future.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to say anything? Okay.
Well, talk about the next one, yeah. The other thing we're talking about is the multifamily zone. And we feel, this was also in, in the housing report, and we've been studying that. We're not as far along with it, but the kind of things we're talking about, that the, first of all, with the multifamily zone, it's very clear that it has to be in only certain parts of town, okay? It, it needs to be major routes of town connected to the sewer. Maybe, maybe there is a denitrification system that could handle it, but we're, we're really looking in the core areas of the town where transportation is, is involved as well. The things we're wrestling with is the number of units per acre for it. I mean, some of the ideas we're having is there's, you know, what Brian had, we had a great working session last week, Brian put a, a map of the town in front of us and showed us all the areas where there was developments and what the, the existing parcels or units per acre were, because right now, we're, we're six, in a, in a, in a business zone, if we created a multifamily zone, it would probably six or eight, was the two numbers we use right now, per acre. He pointed out areas in town where there's twenty, there's thirty, there's forty. He said, we already have a lot more of these, and so, and to be, because we were really sticking with the six and eight, that's all we were, we were going for. But if we're really going to accomplish creating more housing, and we do put it on the sewer, and we do put it, you know, near Route, basically Route twenty-eight is, is our artery, we're going to have to have greater density in, in, in some of those areas. And we, we're not saying we're yet, we haven't even figured it, but we're, I think we're going to be coming at you with maybe a ten or a twelve units per acre. And mixed use, and so, you know, you, you could see some of the retail and residential mixes around the corridor that would actually have some of these great big areas where we have one-story buildings and huge parking lots might get redeveloped with green space, parks, stores, and residents above. And we could even go, we've gone as far as saying the, the next step then would be to maybe get the development, this is going real far, but, you know, transfer of development rights, then we could possibly take development from other areas where we're not going to use, put it right where we want it, on, on the core areas of town. So, I guess, those are the, the primary things. We haven't got as, as far on it, but I think the, the biggest change we're going to be coming to you with is the number of units per acre, and it, it will be specific to certain, and this, this is different than the accessory bylaw. We'll be able to put this, we'll be able to chart this right away. It has to be near public transportation, you know, that's, you want it to be in your villages. The whole, all our other planning, land use process and everything is all, everything relating around the cores. We're not seeing these things, you know, agriculture-zoned areas all of a sudden having great big multifamily buildings out there, no. The leakages are bringing to town. Pat, you got it? We haven't finished it, but anything else we're talking about? Bob, sorry?
Just one of the things that has come out of this is definition of what a housing unit is. So that's something that we have to define, you know, what, what constitutes, how, is it square footage? Is it, I mean, like, my first apartment, when you opened up the sofa bed, it hit the wall.
Right.
And that was my, and I had a little kitchen and, and a bathroom. So, do we have units that are that small, or do we stick to something that has to be twelve-hundred square feet, or what determines that? And looking around, Ryan gave us this whole sheet with the number of units per acre on, on some sites in Falmouth, and it's a mathematical formula based on the square footage of the lot versus the number of units on it, and we pointed out that the Oddfellows Hall is four units in it, but in reality, if it was extrapolated, it would be thirty-two units per acre. So, that's, that's something that we have to wrap our heads around and, and come up with a formula that is going to utilize more of that paradigm, as opposed to, okay, we've got an acre of land and we're going to put six buildings on it, or three duplexes, or whatever it is, because that's really constituted to the demise of a lot of the areas in town, I, I believe, when you just take an acre of land and you put six condos on it or something. I think having a multifamily zone that takes all these other things into consideration is going to be much more beneficial to the town, not only for providing housing, but also the look and character of the town as well.
Okay.
Part of this goes to something else that we've just begun to discuss. I, maybe it's our little group of three, form-based zoning. And we took as an example the brick telephone building down there. Does it really matter how many units, if it were converted? Micro-units, what? Does it really matter what goes on inside, so long as the exterior remains the same? So we're starting to contemplate form-based zoning, too.
Sue?
Okay. And on that point, I, you know, especially if, if development rights are transferred, I, I think we have to look comprehensively. For example, coming from East Falmouth to Main Street, people going to work, twenty-minute drive. We don't want that to be forty minutes. In other words, you have to look at, it's wonderful to say they're on the corridor of public transportation. That in no way means that there aren't going to be fifty cars added in, in some development. So I, I think that that has to be part of the consideration.
Doug? And, and... Another thing that we've discussed, and Bob touched on briefly, was that rather than units, like, you might have a unit that might be seven bedrooms, and then down the street have another unit that might be two bedrooms. So there's a huge disparity, and we're still just calling them a unit. So we might start keeping track of things by number of bedrooms. We don't know how to work that yet, but I think some places do that.
Well, I was going to say, too, in, in, in thinking about that, we need to think about maybe some transitional type of housing, so that people, young people who are coming here, who want a job in Falmouth, but they're maybe not sure that, that it's going to work out for them, either from their perspective or the perspective of the, of the owner of the business. And they don't want to commit themselves to any type of long-term housing, but they want a place where they could go and stay, like a microunit perhaps, or something maybe eight-hundred or nine-hundred square feet, something like that, but a place where they could rent on a short-term basis as well, until they get comfortable. And, and that wouldn't just be for us, that's for, like, everybody. It could be somebody who has a job in Mashpee or Bourne or Sandwich or somewhere else, but it would be the kind of, they do, they do that a lot in Boston, but that makes sense in a large city to have that type of housing. But it would really be good to have it here, and even, not, not just for Falmouth, but for the upper Cape as well, so that if somebody has a job in Bourne, they could rent a transitional type of unit here, that, that wouldn't require that they make a long-term commitment.
What sort of town meeting timetable do you have for the two articles? Never had for both of them? I just was suggesting that I would almost think that two different town meetings, well, they might clarify the issues a little more, as opposed to them getting, say, wow, that's a lot to be thinking about, to, at one town meeting.
It would be nice if we could get the apartment by law, but we've got still so much to do, and the time is almost up.
Good.
Pat, when you were saying transitional rental, what is your concept of the time? Because we don't want this to be, okay, it's rented for the summer, it's transitional.
Right.
Are you thinking about maybe four months, minimal?
Well, I, I'm just thinking of what the, what the purpose would be. And what the purpose would be for, mostly for people who are, yeah, because I rented my condo one time when I moved out for a year, in February, and I rented it to somebody who was offered a job at Bethos, and he was an engineer, but he wasn't sure that he was going to like it here. He came from a town north of Boston, and he, and he didn't know if they were going to like him. So he didn't want to make any kind of a commitment in housing, and just needed a place to stay five days a week, and I was, you know, my, my place was vacant for a while, so I rented it to him. And, and it worked out perfectly, and after about three months, they, the two, the, he and his employer decided that it was a great fit, and so he ended up buying a house here, and he still lives here. So, that's what I'm thinking of, maybe four months, five months, however long it takes somebody to decide that that's, that this is a good fit for them, living here on the Cape. Because it's tough for some people who live elsewhere to all of a sudden be here, different lifestyle, and sometimes they need to really accommodate themselves and have that opportunity to see if it's going to work for them or not. And then you end up with a, a full-time employee, which is good.
Rob?
Yeah, as somebody who came here out of college to take a job in Falmouth, your choices were a winter rental and then find someplace else for the summer, and, and I think in the first three or four years, I moved probably six or seven times. I had places sold out from underneath me as well, and I actually lived in the back of my truck for a couple summers, so. And did not have rental, solid rentals available that I could get year-round, didn't really exist back then, because everybody was in that seasonal flux. It was just common that you just went from summer to winter and moved around. And I think, I, I know a lot of teachers that I worked with that ended up leaving the Cape and their job here, even though they liked it here. It was just that stress of having to change locations all the time that pretty much drove them out.
You see, I think we have to think about the goal, too, in that, right now, and it's not just here, but the, the issue with housing is that a lot of people use our housing to make money, you know, the second homes. And, and, and that's all over the Cape, that's not just here in Falmouth. It becomes an investment for people who want to make money, and that's not working for us as a community. It, it doesn't help us, it doesn't help us sustain ourselves, it doesn't give, create opportunities for the workforce, it doesn't create opportunities for businesses who might want to locate here, but there isn't housing for the, for the workers. So I think we have to really be clear about what our goals are going to be in terms of housing, and what is it we really want to accomplish, and then we'll know what, how, how we should be directed in, in the planning.
I hope this gives the planning board some feedback on our thoughts. I'd like to move on to...
It does, no, it accomplishes a lot, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to move on to the coastal resiliency action plans. What?
Doug, I was just wondering, but we have some people from the Affordable Housing Committee here, they may want to make a couple of comments, I would hopefully give them a chance.
I, I did ask if anyone from the public wanted to speak.
Oh, okay.
I'll say it again.
Yeah.
If you do, what I'm going to ask you to do is to come up to the microphone next to Pat.
And just keep an eye on us.
Okay? Thank you.
We watch us closely.
Yeah.
Not on the Affordable Housing Committee, but as part of the EDIC and Affordable Housing Developer. I've attended many of the meetings that Pat and Jim have had, talking about the bylaw and the multifamily zoning. And one thing I'd like you to consider, too, including that, it'd be great if we make both those changes, but if we don't clean up the process, or we don't have a process that's a little bit more clear than we currently have, you're not going to get the developers that we need in this community to build these type of products. So I hope as part of this process that we also start looking at streamlining the process, and I know that's maybe later on your agenda, but I think that's just as important to all the changes that we're considering.
Great. Thank you.
Good.
Okay. So, I'll move on to the coastal resiliency action plan. And we have what was, yeah, voted at the November two thousand fourteen town meeting ahead of us in front of us, and I'm not sure exactly which way we'd like to tackle this topic, it's one we're going to be tackling for many, many years.
Well, we've all been reading the paper recently about what's happening in Paris, I mean, in terms of climate change, not all the other stuff, but, and it's been, in the Cape Cod Times, it's, there's been a lot of workshops around the Cape recently, and a lot of our scientists from Whitsole, like Rockfield or Blulane, has been involved in it. And what they're saying is, we all know it's there, and it's a huge problem, but you can't solve it overnight, but you have to decide what it is you want to do, you have to do something, and you have to start now. Whatever it is, start now and work towards, because we'll, we'll never fix it entirely, because it's going to happen some days, but at least we can maybe lengthen the time that we have to be able to deal with the issue. And so I have no suggestions as to where to start, but I think that's what we have to do, is figure out how to do that.
I have one, I brought this up at our meeting last year about the same subject. I think our first priority is to have a political decision of whether or not we want to preserve, for instance, that stretch of bike path that keeps on getting eroded, and surf drive. I mean, I think personally, I've already made my mind up that I really feel like we should do as much as possible, for as long as possible, to keep those open. And right now, the policy that the DPW has to go, well, is replace in kind, every time that bike path washes out, they put it back just like it was, they can't improve it, because there's not a policy in place for improvement. And I suggest that the first thing we should do is decide between ourselves, and today even would be possible, I don't know, but I feel like we should have a policy that says, each time that thing gets washed out, they raise it up a foot, and, you know, give them something to work with. Put some sheet piles in, do something to protect it and keep it in place. The first item on the goal is to preserve, and, you know, we're not, we don't have a policy to preserve, so...
And the other thing I would say, too, is we need to really set aside funding, like now, recurring funding, that whether it's three hundred thousand or whatever, but we need to take a sum of money that is available every year that we can use incrementally to reach the goal. We can't just say, decide each year, well, how much do we have this year and what can we do now, but we need to set aside the funding and it should be recurring, because it's so important to do that.
Sue?
I agree with the point of, of making, you know, making the goal and deciding if that's where we want to put a lot of efforts, but I think we have to be a little bit practical and cognizant of the fact of things like, you know, the federal and state authorities don't allow hardscapes, for example. We, I mean, there are certain limitations that we, we butt up against in terms of what we can do, even though we may have the goal. In terms of implementation, there can be issues, the, the water quality management collaborative for the entire Cape, which I'm the elected member from Falmouth of, is in the process, because the, you know, the conflicting goals of managing water quality with coastal resiliency, it, it comes up all the time, or even as much as, you know, inlet widening or any of those things, in, in terms of what we're going to invest in and what, how we're going to maintain it going forward. And I, so just to bear in mind, we, the collaborative believes that that is going to be the forefront of how these, these clashes progress into something maybe more practical, because there are certain, in order for implementation to occur, the state and federal authorities are going to have to be creative. And my thought is, if that can be done as part of this Cape-wide movement toward clean water and sustaining our environment, maybe some of those things will trickle down and help us if it's our goal to, you know, what, maintain surf drive, maintain the bike path. I'm optimistic that in the future, we will have more options to actually accomplish those goals. And I know Peter McConney's been talking about this for a blue streak and he's already, you know, he's seen it ahead of time. But it's on, I'm just saying, if that would be, you know, the board's pleasure to make that a priority, we might actually have tools to do that or more tools to do that.
But the thing is, it's been a year since we talked about it last. And if we just keep talking about it and not making any kind of vote, nothing's going to change.
Oh, no, I'm supportive. I'm not arguing against it, I'm saying...
We might find that there are stumbling blocks that I'm not considering. But I'm just saying, all the reading I'm doing suggests the engineers and the experts say, just walk away from it, don't invest in it. But I'm just unwilling to accept that. So maybe, you know, if we all feel the same way, we should take action.
Same note.
Yeah, Julian Corey and I attended the Third Annual Cape Cod Coastal Conference this past Thursday. And managing coastal risk, enhancing community resilience in a changing climate was the overall theme, okay? But they recognize the fact that there are certain infrastructures and recreational resources like beaches that legitimately we want to preserve, you know? And we're going to do what we can for as long as we can. We know there's a life cycle cost to maintaining them, but we're still willing to put the money in because they're so valuable, you know, to our community and our identity, the sense of place. So I quite agree with you. And I also agree with you, Doug, we need to actually identify these, make sure it's vetted out and say, these are things we want to preserve. We know they're going to get knocked out, we know sea level rise is occurring, but we're going to protect them just as we protect historical buildings. Because we want this to be part of our community for the foreseeable future, you know?
Pat?
There is another way of, aside from armoring. Because what we're talking about is armoring, and that's one option. And I think part of my statement has to begin with, out of that conference, I believe, came a statement that Falmouth is one of the three most vulnerable towns on the Cape. And we can expect to have, I believe it was a two-foot water rise. That's horrendous.
By 2050?
Yes, that's horrendous. And if we don't start now, which is exactly what you're saying, I mean, we're kicking the can until it's too late. There is another way, and after Sandy, I believe it was New York City did sort of a contest of engineering firms. This is not far-fetched, to dump sand out further and then it washes in and replenishes our beach. What happens if you dump sand along the beach, it washes away. So it has to be identified where you have to dump that sand so that it gradually replenishes. This was done in Holland. There's a whole arm that they built out and it replenishes. Bob grew up in a town that, he said, they're now having to remove sand because it's too much, it's worked too well. So that I think we need to look at that as another option than just plain armoring. Because Mother Nature, I've been around long enough, Mother Nature has her way eventually. Whether we armor or not, it's going to happen. We armor surf drive, the beach is gone. Well, why did we armor it? To preserve the road. That is a worthy goal. But is that all we want?
The, well, the state, as you know, just determined that, and the governor has created through the Environmental Protection a special individual to be responsible for all this coastal erosion. And they even are very much aware of the fact that Falmouth has the most coastline of any town in the state and that we are the most vulnerable. And so these funds are going to be available. And I think, and they're going to be available to the towns that have their act together. And so the sooner that we can get our act together or at least begin a plan, even if it's just removing sand and placing it somewhere else where it's needed, that's part of the goal of the state is to do that. So I think anything, we need to put something together so we can apply for this funding as a starter and maybe get right on the list for annual funding because I think that's how the program is set up.
And the only way we can work against what the state and the federal mandates are is if we start with our policies, say, well, this is what our policy is. We can now go to the state and say, well, we're in conflict. We, you know, you're telling us we can't do it, we've decided we're going to. All right, we're going to go to special act, we're going to do something to change what their regulations are because if we don't... Now, having said that, the same point, I don't see us, or I would not support us looking into being able to hold on to surf drive forever. I think at some point, we're going to accept, whether it's 50, 100 years from now, Mother Nature is going to win. I don't see us elevating it and putting in the whole road to surf drive up on...
Causeway?
On the causeway. I don't see us doing that, in my mind, as to what...
More ambitious. Ralph?
Yeah, the state developed the Coastal Erosion Commission and just came out with their final report just about a week ago. So it's 138 pages long. And so I thought, well, I'll take a look at the executive summary, and that's what I did. And then I asked Brian to have it printed up and hand it out today. And if you look at the last two pages where it says recommended strategies and actions, it follows the exact same way we develop our local comprehensive plan. It's got strategies and then it's got actions. And there's eight recommendations there, which I think could lead us easily into developing our final plan on how we're going to deal with this. So it's right there, it's already been done for us. And it shouldn't be hard to take it forward. However, in my opinion, absolutely a dollar figure has to be put on it and it's got to be incorporated in the annual town budget. And I was thinking of one of the things that might make sense, and that would be to increase the capabilities of the Cape to dredge. We have a dredging situation which is inadequate for the entire Cape. I think the county has one dredging unit, as I understand. And then you have to get on a priority list and you can't always do what you want to do when you want to do it. So I would think maybe the town could advocate that the county increase the capacity of that by assessing or using current funds that are donated to the county by each town and increasing that, maybe doubling that, coming up with another dredging unit. One of the items in this coastal erosion report was to put more dredging sand back on the beaches. I mean, that's just one of the things. And that certainly, Don Hofer would be a great advocate of that. And since our beaches are such an economic driving force in our town, then why don't we, why don't we look at our beaches first? This report says that 13% of the Cape and Islands shorelines are currently armored, 13%. Whereas 58% on the North Shore, 46% on the South Shore and coastal and in the Cape and Islands, 30%, I mean, 30% in Cape and Islands is 13%. So we don't have, we don't have the armoring in place that other places do. And if armoring is not the way to go and we want to more or less deal, tweak what nature's doing, then it seems to me that nourishing the beaches with the dredging sand makes a lot of sense. They do it in huge proportions down on the East Coast, down around Cape Hatteras. They have machines down there, if you ever go down there and watch these machines, they're just enormous. The amount of sand that they move is just unbelievable. They have huge, huge problems with their inlets and so forth, waterways being unusable because they have to dredge them and Mother Nature's filling them in all the time.
With the sand that they've just dredged out and put back in, I mean...
I'm sorry?
With the sand they actually just...
They do the same thing in Panama City.
But it's just a financial commitment.
Yeah, it's the money, I mean, you have to put money towards this. I mean, we just can't sit here and wring our hands and say we've got to do something about it. You've got to put money to this issue.
And that's one of the pieces that the state has encouraged too, is to do dredging. I wanted to say the county dredge is an enterprise fund, so it's self-funded, it's not part of the county budget. But they are already looking and have been looking for a second dredge, which I think they'll probably have before too long.
Rebecca?
I guess my question is, how far along are you in making a policy on it that can be acted on? Is money holding up all your decisions?
You voted to your naff, though, right?
How close are you to doing that?
We have the coastal resiliency element. That was voted by the town.
All right.
However, this is beyond what we're talking about today.
But are you, are you prepared in going beyond or is money holding you back?
Okay, I want to, I'd like to answer that, Rebecca.
Yeah.
I hate to do this, but what I am going to suggest today, we have the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee, it's a subset of the Planning Board, and we've charged right along. And we've got maybe a couple more units to go in the overall picture. I hate doing it because we're all busy people. But as Doug pointed out, a year ago, we were talking about the same thing and nothing has happened. I think we need to have a subcommittee established with whomever, whatever constituency. And I would suggest no more than five individuals because if you get more than that, it's too much. Maybe even three, we're a small subcommittee of three. To do more than talk, to do the kind of things we were doing here and suggest to the town, you're going to have to have engineering involved in this. You're going to have to have the selectmen involved in this for policymaking. Maybe not necessarily, but it sure is helpful if you're part and parcel of the beginning part of it. The Planning Board would be helpful to be involved in this. Maybe Don Hofer, I don't know, this will be your decision. But I think as of right now, such a subcommittee should be established. We've just been told about two reports that have come up with some definition as to how we need to move forward. Sandy gave us a lot of lessons on that. So we've got a lot of material to be able to put together a definitive plan for Falmouth, know what kind of money is involved in it, know what kind of engineering is involved in it. And then, one would hope sooner than this time next year, be able to make some decisions and move ahead with it.
Would you suggest that as a selectman-appointed task force or a town manager-appointed task force? Because the...
I'm saying it doesn't matter, it needs to be done. I don't care where the responsibility lies, so long as it just doesn't fall again.
Maybe two selectmen and two planners? Again, the distinction is if we do it by selectmen and then we are open meeting law, we have to take the applications for...
Then we do town manager appointments. We'll get it done faster that way.
It has a little bit less clout.
I don't care, I'm just saying we need to make decisions and start moving.
I just, the purpose of my question is, everyone knows the word erosion.
Right.
And when you say it's one more meeting and one more meeting and one more meeting, that's all that's happened. And all that time, erosion is happening because you can't say the house burned down and we built another one. Erosion never stops. So you can't keep having committee meetings, discussions, more reports, what they're doing in Hatteras, what's going on. It's right here and it has to be now. And what do you need? You need a decision and you need money. And if that takes, I would go as short-term as possible. I would not say have meetings for another year, the erosion is still going. The point is you want to have some decision and success. So you need final, final words on what is going to happen and you need to know what the money is. And I just say to Planning Board, that's the place you need to be. You don't need to keep saying, oh, that erosion, oh gee, that erosion's coming. You need, you know that. And you've got good information, so you need two things, short time and long money.
But you need a plan.
Ralph?
You need to know what you're doing.
I really think you probably already have the plan. You have talked about it long enough to know what's happening and you also know what's happening in other parts of this state and in the rest of the country.
Ralph?
I think you've got it.
Oh, Ralph. Ralph?
Go ahead.
We can start with the action items and the element, the coastal resiliency element. There are a lot of things there. The tendency dealing with erosion and weather change to our infrastructure and things like that, it needs a reaction. Everybody wants to throw up armament. And armament is kind of one of the problems that has caused a lot of the beaches to erode and all that. You need to work with nature a little bit more, and that's what we said in the plan, is we need to enhance the ecosystems, whether it's widening inlets or restoring wetlands, things like that, living reef. And erosion happens off the surf drive because when you go off the beach there, it just drops right off. There's nothing to stop the wave action. If that was shallower, the waves would be broken up. If you go out to Chappie, you see that where the waves are broken up, even though that beach is erosion because it's armored along that part of Buzzet's Bay. So simple things like living reefs and not armoring places, maybe taking some of the armament off of places.
Ralph?
Yeah, two reports that the Board of Selectmen received from what the Coastal Resources Working Group back in March of 2003 and October of 2010. If you read the executive summaries of those, they're exactly the same. They took the one, they took the executive summary from '03 and just put it in with 2010. The differences are in the details in the back of the report. But if you read this and it says, these are the things that the Coastal Resources Working Group recommends, it's all right there, it's already been done. Acquire coastal land, move vulnerable public infrastructure. That's a tough one. Conduct beach nourishment in key locations. Remove unnecessary hazardous or damaging coastal armoring structures. How are you going to, you can do that on the public ones, but you're going to have a tough time doing that on the private ones. Create sand management systems. Develop improved regulations. Well, yeah, that's probably the Planning Board's issue. But, and then the final thing was encourage landowners to obtain conservation easements. That's a tough one, you've got to go out and actually solicit that stuff. And then the final thing they say is there's a clear need for a comprehensive coastal management plan. So these studies are saying, these are our recommendations, but you have to make a plan. So if you're talking about putting a couple people on a working group instead of a committee and coming up with a plan, fine. But it says coastal management is both highly desirable and achievable through concerted town effort. So to make a plan and then implement the plan, that's the thing. But I mean, all of the things that we need to do have already been established. So this is not rocket science. This takes money and implementation, that's what it takes.
There's a significant disagreement on what that recommends and what's being stated here.
That's right.
And the major recommendation there is get surf drive and abandon it and move it inshore.
Exactly.
And that's not what I think a lot of people want to do. So to say we're going to use that plan as what we're going to do, I think we don't agree with that. Jim?
That's just only one of the things that they're...
One of the things, we've touched on a few, both Bob and Pat have mentioned in passing. But one of the things I think we really should watch is in Fishkill, Long Island, they are talking about a living reef and it's a different choice than armoring. What they're actually doing is they're going out off the beach and putting a series of stone, you know, structures, all rocks, that break up the wave action, create sediment to stop coming in and take the brunt of the hit out there and allowing nature to kind of fill in around them and then adding sand to it. And I think we've got to watch that real carefully because if that works, we might get 50 years more out of surf drive if we did the same thing where we would actually, our beaches would get bigger, there'd be great resources. if we did the same thing, where we would actually, our beaches would get bigger, there'd be great resources, if, if it works. They, they got a huge government fund after Sandy. They're, they're spending them, they've studied it, they've engineered it, they're building it. And if that works, I'd be saying, why aren't we looking? There's a couple key places right along our little ribbon where maybe that would work for us, too.
If the water depth were right, and that's the problem. The water depth there is different than it is here. Because otherwise, that group had recommended living reefs when they did their study in 2003, 2010.
Well, I'm familiar with the water depths in the areas we're talking about. It's not that deep out there. It's eight to 10 feet for a long ways out. And these structures are, would actually, I mean, you'd see them from the beach. It's almost like a giant version of the kiddie pool at Surf Drive Beach. It's almost like that.
I'd like to speak to Ralph just a second. The committee members' names, are they on that report?
They are.
Would you, would you consider some of the people, because I think I know a few of those names, that could, were very frustrated after that report was given to the town, and nothing was done? And so I'm just thinking that if you are ready for a committee, you have some seasoned names on that list that might be, they, they would love to see some progress.
Yeah, there are nine, nine people on each, on each one, plus the town engineer and Jude Wilper, who used to be on the planning board.
Okay, I'm only giving that as a suggestion. I know their frustration after they worked for that period of time to get that report ready.
Yep.
And here we sit in 2015, and they were frustrated then, when they did the report.
But as Doug mentioned, some of the items in there listed are a scientific approach. It's a nature lover's approach, which is great. But we're the political leaders of the town right now. So I think it's up to us to determine what we think is best for our town politically and for, for the community. It might not always jive exactly with scientific theory. So I'd like to see a consensus today. How many people feel like we should really preserve both the bike path and Surf Drive, just for instance? Even though it may be going against scientific advice? How many people? I, I'm one that feels that way.
You, too?
I'll put a jab on that, though. I'm not sure I want armament. I really would like to explore the artificial reef concept.
I'm not saying armament, armament specifically either, just that, is that a goal for us? To preserve that, to keep that beach route open, and to keep that bike path open? Or create an alternative? I mean, if we have to reroute the bike path, I don't know how it's done, but my first thought is, it's too easy to give up.
There's, there's one thought I wanted, I should have said this at the very beginning. But if, what we talked about is, you know, what, what Falmouth is. If you compare Falmouth to any other town, what differentiates us is we have access to all our beaches. You come to Falmouth, and you come down, it's not, you don't get the whole thing, because we missed a little bit of a quake. But you get on Central Ave, and you come down the beach, and you can follow the beach all the way to Boring. Okay? You can't do that in any other town. In Osterville, it's broken up, and they, you know, in Mashpee, there's one beach. They just don't have it. And that's why I think people love Falmouth. We, we, we have our road race for that reason, okay? People, you meet some people out of town, they think Falmouth is great. Because that's because they drive their roads and they can see all our beaches. I think that we lose that, and we break that up, I think we've got to hang on to that as long as we can, because I think that's what makes our town great. And that's the point I wanted to make. I know we may lose it someday, but I think we should fight to the very end.
So that's where the difference, the distinction I'd make is, I would suggest I'd be in favor of holding on to it as long as we can. It may not, but I don't think we can do it forever.
It might come to it where we give up, but-
We might find a way, too.
Yeah, exactly, the living reef.
Sue? To move all these goals forward, I might suggest that it is a selectman-appointed task force. Maybe, you know, of course, ask some of the people there, maybe Rob there, or some of the scientists, engineering, finance, planning, so that we, we're in a position, as Pat started the discussion with, to get, I mean, we, we have been in the forefront of clean water, and we've gotten a lot of terrific grants because we were in the forefront. I think we use that model, and we get on the forefront of exactly what you're saying, Doug, which is, and that's why I'm thinking it's a selectmen's task force, because we would say, if the vote is, you know, that we, we weight things toward maintaining as long as we can, that that, that's a goal, you know, to be joined with the, you know, with the comprehensive reports that have already been done. So that, that is how I'd like to implement and move ahead past the analysis into an implementation task force, so that we are in a position to get the early money that might be available from the state or otherwise.
I would hope it'd be a task force that was set by July 1st of 2016, come back with recommendations that can be done within the next three years. And then maybe we're going to have another task force that looks at it longer term, and saying, what can we do right away when the next storm comes up? As opposed to just rebuild exactly what was there? Is there something we should be doing that actually is maybe a little, costs a little bit more, but is the salute, it actually lasts for three years as opposed to every six months? Where we're doing the exact same thing, and it comes more expensive?
Include the funding in the report.
Yep.
Yeah. How, how are we going to fund this going now?
Sam, I'm calling you for a while.
I know. I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry.
I think what we're really talking about is, is a triage policy. It can't be just on a calendar schedule, because storms are going to come in randomly. And we're not going to know that, but I think we need a kind of a, if this happens, we should be responding this way, with some sort of limitation, because we know, you can call it the nature lover's approach, but I think scientists are telling us the inevitable.
I agree, but-
And so we need to look at the inevitable and say, all right, we've got this culture that we're trying to preserve, this economy that we're trying to preserve. Let's take a look at what could happen and what we're willing to invest, you know, under these various circumstances. And say, okay, incrementally, if this happens, we're willing to do this. And here are some methods to postpone it, or to minimize it, you know, to mitigate it. And I, I, so I think such a task force, informed by the scientists who've been looking at these erosion patterns, coastal erosion patterns, and see if we can't make some smart choices and some smart plans to try to manage it, rather than just simply be victims of it and not have thought about what we're going to do in response when those tragedies actually occur.
Doug? And just a quick, I'll be real quick. Also, as Pat was saying, money's going to be coming available. So in addition to plans on paper, we need written plans from the engineering, their wish list plans. If, if they could rebuild the bike path with the technology they know is out there, put it on paper and have it ready, so when these grants come available, you have a scant plan that's ready, just like with the ARR rate funding. The, the groups that had plans on paper, ready to go, got funded first. So if we're ready with that, we're in.
I'm really excited that both boys are so intrigued by this. This is a very important issue. We have a lot of people in this community, both in the scientific community, the consulting community, who are very, very experienced in this, so it would be very easy to come up with a small task force to do this. We spent a lot of time talking about Surf Drive Beach was important, but one issue comes up, too. The sewer force main from Woods Hole is under that bike path. If we lose the bike path, we lose wastewater service to Woods Hole, which is not going to be a very pleasant thing. So, you know, some very serious issues presented here, and that's just one of them. And as soon as we start addressing this in a comprehensive fashion, I think we're all going to be better off.
I actually think coming with a small group's going to be much harder than you think. I think you're going to have 50 people who want to be involved in it, and how you narrow down to a small group may be one of our big challenges.
Well, Mr. Sousa's very good at selection.
I was just going to interject. The, we've been working steadfastly behind the scenes, the board will recall. It's been a few years now, but we were successful in securing several hundred thousand dollars in the environmental bond bill for maintenance and improvements to the southern portion of the Shian Sea Bikeway. And recognizing that that's the oldest portion of the bikeway and the one most in need of repair. But recently, we have some funds that have been allocated, supplemented by the CPC, thank you, Virginia, and approved by town meeting, CP Fund, thank you, and approved by town meeting recently, that would put in motion, and we're working with Brian and others on that, crafting a plan that is necessary for us to have in place in order to take the next step to attempt to access the environmental bond bill monies. Because just because it's in the bond bill doesn't mean we get the money. We have to continue to work in a very diligent way to capture that, and work, continue to work with our legislators and the governor in doing so. But we are taking those steps, and again, we've begun with that southern portion, which is most in need of repair, has been commented on by many, many people. So I just want to advise the board that this is an outgrowth of the things that you have been talking about as well, selectmen as well as the planning board, for multiple years. And staff members are working diligently behind the scenes in that direction. It never comes as quickly as we'd like, but that is underway.
Just to follow up, same train, is we were able to access some limited funds from the same revenue source from the state for the Chappaquaay Beach Nourishment Project to start to think about advancing that forward. The state has taken a, a different approach to that project after the town's application to ask us to fall short of the full permitting process. Because of the complexities of the political and environmental context, they want to make sure that there's, really is community support for the project prior to engaging in the, in the environmental permitting. And so we just, and that really comes straight from what occurred in Sandwich with their beach nourishment project. So just keep in mind that, that even though we do have the most shoreline, we are the most compromised, there are competing environmental interests, particularly on our coastal ponds. So these are going to be complicated, and you are going to need some very specific short-term goals to look to accomplish in order to practically approach a longer-term plan. So I think the combined approach that Doug and Sue are talking about is probably the right way to go.
Brian?
Right, only about what Julian is saying. We're trying to embark upon a design solution for the 3.2 miles from Locust Street down to Crane Street. And when the designer comes in with a design solution, I think at that time, it has to have a very difficult decision. Since you have its policies in place, and we're expecting that to be fairly soon, we're running RRT. As soon as I hear that from Department of Conservation and Recreation, they're going to sit in a long effort. So this common decision's going to have to be made, because we're going to have a real-life project. Coming out of the bike for the next few months.
Doug? And we have another live project right now, the bike path. If we had a policy in place right now for perhaps elevating, just my crazy idea, we're going to be replacing another bridge at Trunk River. Should that be higher? Probably. It's probably going to get replaced at the same height right now, because we have that replace-in-kind type policy. And so we're going to spend more money right now on something that's probably not going to last as long as it should, because it's going to be at a low height. So, I mean, we could have a very quick discussion and a simple policy that might maybe enhance that. But it's just, I mean, it's ongoing, so, so, you know, it's, it's really urgent. Bill?
When you asked whether it was a selectman-appointed committee or a manager-appointed committee, because the selectman-appointed committee would take a longer time and all, I said, oh, then obviously manager. Okay, so my question is, so if we do a task force, which means you're going to possibly have larger breadth, maybe not, how long will it take, the process, to appoint a task force? Should that take very long?
Well, except we have to have an apply, we have to give a, we have to post it, get the application.
I think you do. It's a working group.
If we are appointing it.
Yeah.
If we appoint it, we have to post it, advertise it, get the applications. If Julian appoints it, none of that.
Okay. So that's why-
You can choose them right now.
Right. That's why I'm heading towards, okay, call a task force. You want a manager-appointed task force. And I don't care how you want to get indications of interest in it, an article could appear in the paper. And you get, you invite indications, a letter, to the manager's office. I don't know if this is possible or not, but we've already said, we've got a year behind us and nothing going on. And if it's months to appoint an application-driven task force, we're wasting time when the same effect could be had by a manager-appointed force.
Well, just from the long term, I, I agree with that completely. If it's a, if it's a short term, identify some key projects that we can accomplish and move forward on in the next three years. I mean, you want that list for July 1 for planning and implementation. That's, that is a much smaller scope. If you're looking at the, developing the coastal resiliency plan, I believe it is the same, similar level of effort to the, the working group for, for water quality. And that it will need the same type of resources, staffing, planning, that type of effort that does take a significant amount of thinking to put the right pieces together. And that might be, that might be a longer-term effort.
So you're saying, in fact, it's two efforts, perhaps. It could be two efforts.
I don't see them as, yeah.
Yeah, so get it kicked off now, or as soon as now as possible.
And maybe we already tell the task force, your first recommendation is the creation of a long-term beach management commission. I think to have them both coming out at the same time doesn't make sense. I'd say have this other one exist for six months, and out of that comes-
A recommendation for what the scope of services is for that group. I think that's an accomplishment.
Yes.
That these, all these people agree to what that scope of work is, that's, that is a accomplishment.
Thank you, because I saw it getting muddied again, so.
The one complication of this is, it is not appropriate, actually, for us to tell the town manager to, to create a task force. It is his choice.
Okay, we haven't told him anything.
I'm listening. I might call it a working group, by the way, as above the task force, just because it's a more connotation.
Get him to work faster. We're going to take a five-minute break, because Cape Cod Eagle's going to come back and take away the food attendant at around 11:00. And so if we don't have it now, we'll take a little break, and then I'd like to start up right again at 10:00 o'clock. Thank you. Getting back to order, please. All right. Next item on our agenda. Doing a great job getting through this. I appreciate everyone's attention and efficiency. Discuss the proposed Falmouth Cultural District. And this is something that came to the, I was coming to the board, I guess about a year and a half ago. Barbara Milligan was head of Historic Highfield, was something that was suggested. Put on hold for a number of different reasons, but I wanted to bring this back to what the benefits of establishing the Falmouth Village Cultural District, which would be including Highfield Drive, North Main Street, Palmerav, Village Green Area, and both sides of Main Street to Gifford Street, determining at the Falmouth Center up on Gifford Street. Pat, I think you also wrote this.
To a degree. I've been working with Roger Day, who is here, and his wife. And they actually put this, really did a lot of the work putting the cultural district together. And it really has such a great benefit to Falmouth. Probably Heather knows some of the details, too, the importance of having a cultural district. Because for one thing, I think people in this town would probably really like to know what the economic benefits are of, of our economy here and our Main Street, which has a huge financial benefit to the community. And, and when you think of the arts and culture, and the arts community also has an enormous economic benefit to the town. And I think townspeople don't often think of that. When you think of all the things that go on in this town, at the museums on the green, you know, at Highfield, at, at the Arts Center over there on Gifford Street, and, and how that spreads out, and, and all the different events that happen, Pagnoon and Park, these are all part of the arts community. And they have a major, major economic benefit to us, but all the other towns on the Cape as well, that, that benefit from the arts. So I think the cultural district and defining that cultural district would also maybe allow us to seek other types of funding, because we have a cultural district. But I think it also sends a clear message to the community that this is such an important part of who we are and what we do. So I really support having this cultural district and getting the word out there and, and having people really understand and benefit from the arts community in this town.
And the way the process works is that, first is the selectmen pass a resolution affirming that we're in support of this, and then goes through a process of applying. But I certainly felt that it did have some connections to the planning board also. The planning board is not officially in any of the process, but I just wanted to bring it to these two boards for, I think would play a fairly brief
There isn't a question that I had about any discussion that I didn't find here. It is, it's simply each article, and then it tells you how you're going to do it, you're going, how you're going to set up your organization, how you're going to pay for it, where it's going to be, what's the purpose of it. This is excellent. And it's precise and it isn't like 100 pages. So we know that it was Barbara Milligan that did it, and I just, I just wanted to make sure everyone had one. Because I think you can even follow this format for many of the things that you think about the town. It's simply written right here. And I just think you have to read that and vote for the last page.
And to follow up on Pat's point as well, the EDIC, for example, has been working on things like a maker space, you know, as part of an economic driver to town. There are a lot of artists that, you know, would, you know, for their sustainability and for the character of the town and also just for, you know, people of all ages and their job security. This cultural district, and one of the things that Roger and Judy Day have discussed, would be even moving eventually to a plan for a performance space. So this is, you know, this has great potential to be another economic and cultural foundation for the town of Falmouth.
Well, I feel we've put the planning board a little bit at a disadvantage because they don't have the document in front of them.
Heather, to come.
I know, but I still don't think, to even put them on the spot to have a discussion, I'm not sure really is appropriate. But maybe if Roger wanted to say any words in support of it, and maybe we can ask the planning board at your next meeting at that point weigh in as opposed to even trying to ask you to do it right now.
Our little subcommittee of three had discussed that when we did the blank map, but we hadn't pulled it along as much, but just Highfield area. I think we'd be very much in favor of something like that.
Roger?
Maybe a little history would be helpful here. There are a number of states that have cultural districts within them, and there are a number inside Massachusetts. We're a little late to the party. Hyannis has a cultural district, Orleans, Barnstable Village, Sandwich, a number of other towns are applying currently, and I hope that we join them. The Mass Cultural Council is actually beginning to allocate funds that they will be giving to each of the cultural districts to help with wayfinding, signage, management of the people's flow. The understanding behind this is that the arts actually have an economic impact. And the cultural tourists, the sort of person who might be attracted to come here because there are cultural activities, tends to be older, better educated, more wealthy. They stay longer, something like five-plus days as opposed to three-plus days from your average tourist. And they only interact with the police to get directions. So they are a, they're a very welcome visitor to town. They travel in the off-season, not in July and August, which is a good thing for us. So I would hope that the board would look in favor on this and promptly vote it so that we could move ahead.
And just following up what Roger has said, and they've studied this tremendously, and I know they have a lot of additional information if anybody is interested in, in fact, are thinking about doing a presentation maybe at the library soon, just to even give more information. But another kind of parallel interest, Beth Colt is, has also been doing a lot of research in, for Falmouth Academy, along the same lines of the, of performance capability and the benefits to the town. So I just want to mention those upcoming opportunities.
Ralph?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we're looking at this, we're not at a slight disadvantage, we're at a huge disadvantage. We should have had this, we should have had this early this last week so we could take a look at it. So, I mean, it, it's very hard for anybody, I would think, on the planning board to discuss the benefits of this or anything else. I, I, all of the questions I had are probably answered right in here. You know, who do you apply to? Where are you going to get the money? What's, what's the benefits? All that stuff. It, it, I mean, it just, a day late and a dollar short as far as I'm concerned. I, I wouldn't be willing to vote on anything like this without having it in advance and a thorough discussion of it amongst all of us. It just, it's a shame.
I would say that we're only a day ahead of you because I only picked this up last night, so I don't think, I don't think any of us are in a position really to move on this, but I think it's information for us to digest and consider in the future.
Well, why is it on, why is it on the agenda then? I mean, you know, I mean, if we can't even discuss it, why, why are we even, why is it on the agenda? And if, if it was, if this agenda was put together a while back, then I would have thought that this information was available when the agenda was put together.
I'll explain that, and I apologize if it was not clear, that really this was on the agenda not as a discussion point, and I know it's said discuss, what's there is more of an introduction, that here's this idea that's out there, not, here's the information, discussion's going to happen in the future, similar to at the last joint meeting we had, we mentioned about the community development person, not for discussion, but say, we don't want you guys to know about it later on. This is something we're moving forward with, we're interested in, we want to inform you right away, here's what's out there, we're investigating it, and you're not surprised later to find out that we're doing that.
I just want to add that Barbara Milligan, the former director of Highfield Hall, was very instrumental along with Roger and Judy in really developing this concept some time ago. And she's obviously a tremendously talented individual and is no longer serving in that role, so this really didn't move anywhere. And so really it is to Doug's credit to reintroduce it and bring it back to conversation at this level.
And if I may, this has already been vetted by town council. You know, that was one of the things that was important, that town council review this so that we could move forward. So there are no, any, there are no more obstacles going forward and doing this, and we should really vote this ASAP because it's very important to the people who are working in the arts community, that our, our cultural district be defined because it gives them another level of exposure and it gives them the opportunity perhaps for additional funding. So we should really move on this as soon as we can.
And there are quite a few steps that have to happen. We have to vote approval as the board, we then have of the resolution, we then have to hold a public hearing and have the public respond to it before we can then take the next step forward. And I'm just hoping to get some feedback from the planning board before that public hearing, and it does not have to happen immediately, but I do agree, as soon as we can. Doug?
And if you could turn your attention to page four, what action is required now? Please pass the resolution that demonstrates your commitment to establishing a state-designated cultural district. Please vote to approve the partnership agreement and grant permission to proceed with the application. What harm could it possibly do to let them get started?
As far as it being on the agenda, probably is my fault. I saw it on the agenda and I'm real familiar with this program, then I realized why I'm real familiar with it. We've discussed it at the EDIC, and we've been talking about it for a year and a half. We've actually loaned money to them, and it's been something that we've been working with all the time. And I guess I just thought everyone knew about it, it was my fault that I didn't educate the rest of our board members on it. I just, that's, I think that's what happened, because I saw it, said, sure, I know all about that, let's go ahead. And that's, that's how it got on the agenda, and it was probably my mistake to not make sure that everybody else had the information.
Pat?
Functionally, I have a question. Because it says a state-designated cultural district, okay. You designate a district and what happens then? And I understand, then you can become eligible for funding sources, fine. But functionally, how does the town behave any differently to be able to encourage tourists to enjoy our town in a different manner than we do now? And let me tell you why I'm asking this question. We're blessed to have our son living in Laguna Beach. And so I learn when I go out there because it's, again, an intelligent, well-educated, fairly financially secure seaside community. One thing they do is they have their first Thursday, and it's a stroll down the Laguna Beach Main Street where they have the galleries and other entities along there that provide, I don't know, crackers and cheese, glass of wine, and you could just stroll down Main Street enjoying this and going into all of the venues. And I should think that something of the nature of a stroll like that would bring tourists into the town, would popularize who we are. We are known as a restaurant town because we have such very ethnic restaurants along Main Street. Well, if we can popularize a cultural stroll of this nature every month, first Thursday, it would bring people into our town more than just designating a cultural district and being able to get financing. So that's my two cents worth without even knowing further on this. And like Doug, I see absolutely no reason that we couldn't at least pass a resolution today to get this whole thing started.
One of the things you'd probably get financing for a stroll.
Is there a boundary in mind at this point? Because I was just wondering if it was from Highfield to Shore Street or if it should be?
Gifford and up all the way up to Dillonham.
Up to Dillonham, but it turns the corner?
Turns the corner, yeah.
And I was also wondering too if there might be, if it is considered a cultural district, if there would be funds to help create performing arts centers or art galleries or things like that? And if someplace is outside that district, I'm thinking of East Main Street that could use a boost, and if we could extend it down there, even though there may not be anything there yet, if there is that type of funding that's available, that might help jumpstart something for East Main Street, which surely needs something.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes, could we ask Roger to answer that?
I guess I could answer that, but the firm maybe. The expectation is that by having a cultural district, we will get preferential treatment with many of the state agencies that dole out money for a variety of different reasons, including transportation and others. But a cultural district, as defined by the Mass Cultural Council, has to be walkable and it has to be dense, so it can't just leak down Main Street because we have issues that we'd like to address out there in East Main Street. I don't frankly know for sure whether the Mass Cultural Council will accept our proposed boundaries, which are basically Highfield Hill to the Falmouth Arts Center. That's not, that's not dense, the way they think about dense, so we're going to argue it, but I, I don't know how that's going to turn out. So to exceed that boundary further, I think is, is not going to be possible.
Ralph, you have a question?
Yeah, well, the last, the last sentence here on the, on this cover sheet, or sheet number one, says, you have to purchase two signs, one at the beginning and one at the end. So, I mean, is this a straight-line district? It doesn't, didn't sound like it was a straight line to me.
Well, basically, the only requirement levied on the town, specific requirement, is that we have to have two signs to introduce the district.
Yeah, it says one at each end of the district. That's what it says.
Yeah, we'd probably cheat on that and not put one on the top of Highfield Hill, but put it down at the foot.
Okay, so what is a straight-line district?
In our case, it is.
Okay.
In other towns, it's round.
It doesn't sound like it to me when you're. Two hundred yards up Gifford we're talking about, Gifford to Dillonham is the hook on the end. So you need to incorporate the wayfinding you talked about earlier.
Wayfinding and signage.
Solve that issue and make it all work.
You would find in a place like Hyannis, which is ahead of us, the Main Street piece, is that they not only have informational signs and signs directing people from point A to point B, but they have an app for the smartphone so that you can stand in front of a place and, and have someone speak to you about what you're looking at.
Handheld key.
All of this might unfold in, in time, but it's the first step.
Kelly?
I think you can really make a tremendous argument to make that connection to the art center with what happened with the library and the Mullins School and the relationship between the civic uses, the cultural amenities of the library, the Veterans Green, the types of historical documents that are available at the library, the investment by the CPC in both of those facilities. I'm happy to help you make that argument when the time comes.
I look forward to that.
Well, the next action that is possible would be a resolution actually of our board. And maybe if we're willing, I think my board, the selectmen's ready to make that resolution if there are no objections to the planning board. And I'm sort of put you on the spot, Jim.
There's one thought in listening to this, and, because you're probably going to see an action item coming out of, out of one of our elements in the historic that sounds a lot like this, especially with the walking tours and everything and signage and everything. So I, I wouldn't want to have a competing aspect of it. Whoever does it probably should take a, take a look at that because I think you're going to see some of the same suggestions coming on the historic side, that people, you know, walking through the downtown district, going in front of buildings, maybe handheld, all the same things, it's probably going to coming at it the same way. So there might be a little coordination so we don't have two signs right here and two signs right there, you know, it just needs to.
Well, I think what, what we're doing is, which I hope we do very soon, if not today, is to approve the application for the, to, to the Mass Cultural Council to approve this designated area as a cultural district in Falmouth. That's what we're doing. We're not creating the district. We're actually, we're approving the application so that the Mass Cultural Council will actually, will actually vote, will actually support it and create the district so we can move forward and make it eligible for the funding. So, you know, I mean, the sooner we do this, we, this has been worked on for so long and, and, you know, it's already been vetted, town council has no issues with it, with the district, and I just think we should move forward on it.
Jim, I don't see any conflict with the historic element. As a matter of fact, it could be used to support the application, I think.
Conplimentary.
Yeah, complimentary is what I see, yeah.
I do think so.
And the planning board's not required to be voting on it.
Voting either.
So as long as we don't see any objection, it's not really for us to say. But I do think we actually, I'll correct what I've said, I think we have to a resolution to support it, and then I think later on we have to hold a public hearing to actually approve the application. And I don't think that this can count as, because we have not posted as a hearing to approve it, and so.
I think we need to check on that formality, what, what is actually required unless Roger knows. Do you know if it's just simply a vote of the board of selectmen? Do we have to have some kind of other backup to, before we can vote to approve the application?
I don't think so. I think you just need to vote to go ahead.
To move forward with it.
You are not able to formally apply until you had the public meeting, and then until the chairman writes a specific letter saying that you have had the public meeting and that you are formally applied. It is the town that applies, it is not any other organizations.
So we should agree to put that on an agenda and have a public hearing.
I'd also say I'm more than happy to address this in depth to the selectmen at a time of your choosing, if you'd like more data than you have in front of you now.
Well, I think it would be in order for our board to at least vote a resolution that supports a moving forward in this process.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then the idea is we will have a public hearing in which we will move forward and also hope to have some input from the planning board, hopefully with support of that. All right, thank you. And our next item is to discuss the proposed community development department and director position and to.
Transportation, not doing that.
We did, we did, everybody. And to start off the discussion on this, I have a lot of questions as to exactly what this would look like and how it would fit with our current planning board, how would it fit with the EDIC, how would it fit with the community preservation committee? And, you know, I was originally hoping this would be something we could be moving forward and put into the fiscal year 2016. I don't have enough questions that have been answered, or answers questions I have yet. We did, everybody. And to start off the discussion on this, I have a lot of questions as to exactly what this would look like and how it would fit with our current planning board, how it would fit with the EDIC, how it would fit with the Community Preservation Committee. And, you know, I was originally hoping this would be something we could be moving forward and put into the fiscal year 2016. I don't have enough questions that have been answered, or answers questions I have yet. And so I would be encouraging us to be, take a little more time and slow down the process a little bit from what we had initially said in the summer when we talked about it.
I think that should be balanced with the needs in terms of, I mean, maybe it's something that we could start with sort of on a part-time basis and then develop that. Just if we, if we're not sure of the full expanse of the position, I mean, I think we're talking, certainly there's a housing, you know, element to it. I think that there should be an expedited permitting element to it. We have a new IT person who's, you know, got a huge job in terms of implementation. So my thought is if we could at least talk about a couple of goals, it might make sense to, to just start it at a minimal level if we don't feel like we're ready to start on a full-time level.
I mean, I guess where I'm, I have so many questions, I would almost rather bring in someone who is outside the town and knows about all these things, who could give us some advice. Interview the planning board, interview CPC, interview us, and really come up with a recommendation to give us some direction because I know I'm very confused as to how this is all going to work.
Well, you know, I've worked in a town that had a director of planning and community development and was creative while I was there, sort of creative. But it was, it was bringing the planning function, which is land management mostly, and the issue of community development. How is our, what do, what are our goals for the development of our community? What do we want to see, whether it's commercial, whether it's other forms of real estate, whether it's affordable housing or whatever it might be, or malls, anything that is going to occur in the town, where do we want it to happen? Now, we're in a position now where we don't have a whole lot of land left over. So going forward, I think we're looking more at redevelopment than we are looking at development. And how do we go about, and we've already had some of this discussion earlier without actually focusing on community development. But we're talking about microunits, you know, this, the kind of housing that we think we need for the future. And that's really what community development is all about. And that's different from land management. So it's kind of combining all aspects of planning related to land use and how we see this community of being able to function in terms of its economic health and its future. It just puts it all together in one area. So with, so it becomes a department where you have the planner, you know, who's dealing with the land management, and then you have someone else whose focus is more on community development in that sense and redevelopment. So, I mean, there are job descriptions, I'm sure, out there. There are several towns that have this type of function. So it's nothing new. It's, it's new for us. And it's new for us because it provides focus, I think, for the town. We're not just focusing on land management, we're really focusing on what we want our community to be in the future. And as redevelopment goes forward, what are our goals for that? What do we want to accomplish in different areas? So I think that, for a person who's the director of planning, it adds a whole nother piece of planning to that position. And this way, I think, by having a department and a director whose job is clearly more focused on the redevelopment part as well as the land use part, makes sense to me.
What I'm hearing said, and where I know the gap is, at least in my mind, is Doug,
you said, "Go slow initially." And I think this can be accomplished by getting an Economic Development Director because such a person, I'm talking about somebody who's really trained in economic stimulus and ideas, and that doesn't necessarily mean bringing all departments together under one head initially. So this is the going slow. This is where our gap is. And this, we're not the only ones who have this gap. It really is all over as we become an aging community. It's a huge problem. How do we keep our economy going? So I might suggest that you look at getting an Economic Development Director in, a new position, that then studies our problem, makes suggestions as to land use, redevelopment, and how we move forward to encourage young people to come in, what kinds of businesses we need to encourage. I see that other communities, when we were doing a local comprehensive plan that had been successful, determine what they want to be, and then the managers, mayors, selectmen, whomever it is, who's head of the government, do outreach at court businesses to come into the community, which is why I'm coming down on, look at an Economic Development Director instead of an overall bringing everybody together and then see what that particular, one would hope, very talented person has to suggest for a community like us.
Ralph?
Yeah, I'm looking at a matrix of organizational characteristics, and I can't even tell you where I got it. But it's really good. Somebody gave it to me, or I down lunged it, or something, I don't know. But it has one, two, three, four, five different organizational types over here on the left-hand side. And I think, I came close to printing these off and then handing them out today, but I didn't know exactly where you were going to go and whether you had some handouts of your own or not. But anyway, one of the, one of the organizations is an EDIC, which we have. And I, I worked with Michael through the CPC and also Jim is our representative and talked to him about the EDIC. And I've seen how successful they've been recently in doing things. And I also know that they don't have any staff support, per se, which in my opinion, they need. Whether the town provides it or not, or whether they can fund it themselves, after talking to Steve Spitz, who used to be on the EDIC and was their financial guru, he's hoping, he was hoping that the new, the new solar field on the landfill will produce enough revenue so they can hire their own staff support if the town doesn't provide it. And that's, that's me talking. That's not, that's what I garnered from talking to them. But the next, the next organizational type just above that is called the Consolidated Community Development Departments, which I, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, that's what this is. And it tells you, you know, what's the mission, what are the tools, special powers, Board of Composition, the structure, the geographic scope, and then the legal citations. It gives you all of the chapters of Mass General Laws that apply to this. So I'm thinking, this is what you're talking about, but I don't know. Okay? So then I'm thinking, having talked to Jim and thinking on myself and thinking like, maybe the EDIC could morph itself into this and be part of that. And I don't know whether they want to do that or not. But I'm just saying that I think that if you're going to talk about this and discuss this, I think this matrix would be a great tool for you to use.
Jim?
That document, I believe, is something we sourced at the EDIC. I think we had our council take a look at it and give us the options of all the different things we could become that are of similar structure. And it does sound, some of those do sound like this, but I don't know how it could be integrated. Maybe, it might be that maybe this EDIC becomes an advisory to this position, you know, maybe they share it or somehow get integrated to it, that we would have, that way we would still have outreach to real estate developers, you know, builders and bankers working along with the town. Maybe there is a way to put them together. It sounds like it anyways, at least the words are all the same.
Where does this proposal come from? Something that came in during our strategy meeting during the summer of realizing that there are, the planning board, the planning department is overwhelmed in what they're doing. And I think there, we felt there were other things that needed to be done. We didn't have anyone within our town infrastructure that was a cop in these things and looking at some of the issues. And something that came up in our, our strategy meetings.
It's in the Selectman's Five-Year Strategic Plan as well.
Specifically, at the time of that housing analysis, when there was really great fire, do something, do something, do something, one of the things we talked about is how many entities there are that do housing. And they had asked for some coordination. So in terms of community development, there certainly was a housing development element to the Selectman's suggestion at our retreat, where that was one of the goals that we thought could be organized such that we were moving forward on those goals. And then it kind of turned into something, you know, to, that could be expanded in terms of more community development and, you know, certainly the EDIC, Michael asked with the head of it, it's right here, we constantly work on this. We, you know, we speak at every single meeting, we have usually a presentation about economic development. We have, you know, representatives from all, whether it's a shellfish person who wants to, you know, talk about, you know, seaweed snacks or something like that, any, the arts, makers, groups, we, all kinds of economic development. How do we partner better with Hui or Woods Hole or with Bentos or, you know, it's, these are constantly worked on and in the forefront. We, you know, the solar project is a big one, the train station is a big one, you know, balancing workforce and where, you know, the workforce's accessibility to housing and transportation so that it's sustainable. So that's, you know, that just, that's kind of where we were about, you know, starting to, again, it's implementation.
Same thing, yeah. I guess I'm a little disappointed we haven't gotten any further since our strategic planning meeting last year. And Julian has been looking at this in terms of how I might reorganize it, the town employee staff, you know. But I think, Doug, you're onto a good thing. I think we probably would really benefit from sort of vetting this by bringing in an outside consultant that has the background in this and presenting some models to us so we can look at it, but we could educate ourselves and we could perhaps become more unified as to our expectations for this kind of a position. So I'd be very much in support of doing that, just basically help inform us on what the potential is and how, you know, future reorganizations might make sense to incorporate this kind of a function.
That was certainly my goal, is to have it before entities I think are involved in this, which is Selectman, the planning board, the EDIC, and the CPC, all saying, what a great idea, that that would be, but I would acknowledge by that. Virginia, would you like to?
I'm Virginia Carmichael, and I'm current Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to say that I, personally, speaking for myself, not for the committee, it would be really a great relief to be able to be part of that department and be staffed by that department and therefore have access to overall community goals for development and not be operating as we kind of do in a vacuum. It would really be a very powerful move for us, speaking for myself.
Thank you. Thank you. Ellen?
I just want to add that the, there's a couple of other agencies that we haven't talked about that may or may not have roles, zoning board of appeals, building, there are so many agencies and bodies, historical commission, historic district, well, historical commission. There are so many bodies that are involved, people, interests, processes, that the idea of having a little bit more of a strategic view and collaborative approach initially, I think, would be incredibly helpful to be done.
Rob?
I just wanted to say that Sam's comment is the first action item on the economic sustainability element. So we can knock one off.
Great.
Any other comments on this? Doug? I had originally thought, apparently incorrectly, that this was somehow integrating the planning and ZDA more effectively, but I guess it's nothing to do with that. There's the potential for that. It's one of multiple models.
Just on a practical point on that particular question, I have a lot of builders come and say, you know, I put so much money in, it's, you know, maybe a community development project, got finally to, you know, the day to organize, all my experts here made the presentation and was told by a board, I'm totally out of left field. Wouldn't it have been great for everyone if I, if there had been a resource so that I knew all the work that I was putting together was actually more on target in terms of what the particular board might like? So that's another, you know, it saves money, it attracts builders, businesses to town.
Ralph, you have a...
Yeah, well, this matrix has this community development department thing, says five members, four appointed by the municipality and one by the state. I'm not sure that's what you're thinking about, but I was wondering whether or not it might, the first step would be to approach any other town that's on the Cape that has one of these and ask them, not, not ask them to tell us about it, but come and brief us about it. Actually show up at a Board of Selectmen's meeting and say, this is how, this is when we did it, this is how we do it, and this, these are the pluses and these are the minuses. Take that as your first step before you hire a consultant to come in and tell you what you think you ought to do. I would, I like real-time experience when I, when I move forward with something myself.
Tim, a suggestion, the new town manager of Provincetown was previously the economic development person for the Boston area. Come up with his name right now, but I just happened to bump into him, and he might be the kind of person that could come in now that he's actually there tackling the problems of Provincetown and actually come in and just give us his insights. And I, he's the kind of gregarious kind of person that'd probably be willing to share an evening. So that, I can get you the name. I have it on a business card.
We could buy him dinner and as long as it's less than $50. We could, you know, encourage him and maybe, maybe give him some gas money. But I mean, that would be my suggestion for the first step for this thing.
My immediate response to that is I want to have the buy-in of as many boards as possible. And to have him come and talk to us, and we think it's a great idea, I would worry that that's just us thinking it. And, you know, and that's the reason why I like the idea of a consultant who was going to interview all the different boards, really get the input, and then make a recommendation that supports the interests of everybody, not necessarily just what the five of that and...
Or just send us an email and tell us when that meeting is.
So we don't, you know, we don't let you know anything. We try to keep... So we could do that, too.
We'll tie out the date of vote.
Okay, great. Any other?
I just think it's high time that this happened. You know, there's a lot happening in town. The town is ripe for redevelopment, and we want it done correctly. And I think in order to do that, you need a professional in that position that's going to guide the other boards. And I hope the other boards will join in. I think the planning board is fairly comfortable with this because we have discussed it at the economic or the local comprehensive plan level. So I'm in support of it.
I think the timetable, you know, Ralph was asking, do we have a matrix that we could present? Is once we realize that this meeting is happening now, to have it for fiscal year 16, we would have already had to have it within the budget that's being proposed in two weeks and have a job description. There's just no way that was going to happen. That's the reason I said, well, we can actually slow down a month or two and make sure that when we do propose it for the next year, it is exactly what you want to. Jim?
Well, I don't want to speak for the EDIC, but, you know, I think we have two different things to talk in here. We probably should have the EDIC get together and see what, you know, we were talking as a group of, you know, morphing ourselves into something, but an independent, not part of the town, I mean, just what we are now. But, but we got to see if we can, if these things are merging together. But you're talking about town department funded, running under the town manager, which is totally separate from what the EDIC is. Right now, they're diverse and distinct. It sounds like there's, they could come together or have a role here. So that'd be something we'd worth talking about.
Well, I just wanted to just respond to Bob's comments, too, that it's really important
that we, we bring all of the groups together in that sense, particularly the ZDA. I mean, they have, they would come under that umbrella because they have their own set of regulations. The planning board has regulations. The EDC is working on their piece, even though they are a separate corporation under Mass General Law, they're not part of the town government, but they're part of the community. And I think it would be helpful if we were all, if we had some... And I think it would be helpful if we were all, if we had some umbrella that all of these three or four areas could work under so that the ZBA understands what the planning regulations are, and, and we understand what they're doing because they have to, they're the, the court of last resort, so to speak, when somebody is not happy with what happens, they go to the zoning board of appeals in many, in many instances, or they have to go there to get a particular permit. But they're working in a silo, and I think anything that we can do to eliminate silos and have us all working under the same umbrella would be beneficial to everyone, including the CPC and all of this.
Well, the path I can see sort of being suggested consensus is to have someone else come in to talk to the board of selectmen about how it has worked someplace else, but at the same time ask the town manager to put some funds aside for a consultant to come in, do an analysis, if after the person comes and talks to us and say, you know, it isn't a good idea, we're not going, we can then not spend the money that we have asked for, but if we are enthusiastic about it, we can continue with that process.
Paul?
You know, I find it very interesting. One, three years ago, I was appointed by the board of selectmen to serve on the charter review committee, and one of the things we did was interview the acting town manager, and I remember asking her the question, how many direct reporting people do you have? And she said, more than two dozen. And subsequently, Mr. Suso came on board, and he was also answering the same question. And it struck us, how do you have so many people reporting to one individual? So we, at that time, put in the recommendations that to be streamlined and try to consolidate some of these particular functions. And I know we've done it on finance, and this is just another step in the same area. So I just think it's a very good idea, because you were asking about planning board input. I think it's a very good idea. We've suggested a long time ago.
I was going to note that Plymouth, Yarmouth, Barnsville has a growth management department. Very common model, but always uniquely tailored to where the each community is and the place and time it's created, so there are many different local communities we could have come and talk.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Just that I feel like it would be a good position because it would take a very diverse, flexible person to interact with all the different boards and keep them all updated, but it's certainly something we could use. At our recent planning board meeting, I said, you know, maybe we should work on communication between planning and ZBA, just so we don't have little instances like a town meeting, you know, a long presentation about why we had a bad idea, when really we were just responding to a request from the building commissioner to address whether or not it would be possible to increase that height in the flood zone. We were just putting it out there for town meeting to decide, but because of the lack of communication, ZBA was really, you know, way on the other end of the spectrum where, if we had a person in place, maybe that wouldn't happen. Maybe.
All right. Any other thoughts, anyone? Holly?
Hi, Holly Wilson, I'm chair of the affordable housing committee, and I don't completely speak for them because we haven't had a chance to talk about this a lot, but I did a little bit of research to try and figure out what this community development director and, and department might be. And like Heather said, many communities have them, but the descriptions are very varied. One, Plymouth states a lot about supporting housing, and I wanted to just say that I do believe the housing needs to be a big part of this. Other communities, doesn't seem so much. What's been talked about here so far is so broad, it, it almost seems that some elements could be lost in the eventuality of it, so doing my thing to pipe up for dealing with the housing. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any future agenda items you'd like to have the next time we do this? I think it's been very productive, and I'd love to hear suggestions of what's next besides continuing all the things we are, make sure they get done. All right, well, thought, and now you can certainly forward ideas to me or to Jim, and I think we will hope to have another meeting in about three or four months again. I think they're very, very productive.
Let's have it sooner rather than later. We, we talked, it's been a long time, so I think it's very good to do this, and I know it's a commitment, everyone's personal time.
Could we target maybe quarterly meetings?
Okay, so March, we'll try to say, pick a date in March.
Certainly try.
Do you envision having them Saturday morning workshops? I find it very productive, the twice now that we have it.
I think that worked out well. I don't want to go later than March because then we're at, you know, we get late in March, we get to April town meeting time and May election, so mid-March, beginning of March would be what I'd be.
And we shouldn't try to have other meetings, like you, we, the planning board shouldn't have our meeting, you know, separately, and then you're trying to be too much. I think having a merged agenda is what's important and not two, two separate ones because then we kind of lose connection on it, it just goes away, we're not working all together, and I think this works out much better.
Can we, can we possibly, on that next agenda, hopefully have something to vote or discuss for the coastal resiliency group? Is that possible?
I would hope we'd have a report, a midterm report from them.
That'd be a great target, huh?
Agenda items, same idea, but on the community development person. I think by then, I mean, we've got a few, month for a survey, so maybe we can bring it to have a report at that time as well.
Yep. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the board.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to adjourn also?
This is your sworn attendance.
Motion to adjourn?
What's that?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.